Welcome to the Northampton Planning Board Meeting. This is a public hearing. It's on October 27, 2022. We have Zoom participants too, but they're able pretty much just to listen to the conversations and see the plans. They aren't able to ask us or the applicant's questions. All those questions they had to send in advance to Carolyn Miss of the Planning Office. So before we open up the site plan review for Prospect Place, we'd like to ask if there's anyone who wants to make a general comment to the planning board about items that are not on tonight's agenda? Something that could be germane to planning in the city? Or anything else? Okay. Hearing none, we'll move right into our site plan review for more than one curb cut. And it's a 40R review by Prospect Place owner LLC, otherwise known as Valley Community Development Corporation, to renovate and create 60 units with site improvements at 737 Bridge Road, Northampton MAP ID 18C48. Carolyn, I wondered before we opened it up to the applicant to give us a presentation, could you remind the board just real quickly the summary of the 40R review? And what that means for our deliberation?
Sure. So 40R is the review procedure for properties that are zoned under the Smart Growth or 40R overlay district. So if you remember, just recently, the City Council adopted the overlay for this parcel as an expansion of what was already created. And the 40R review is peril is analogous to site plan review. So it's a simple, it's a simple majority and it's supposed to be sort of a an accelerated path for approval to allow for development where the city has already established the locations of where additional density and what makes sense for development to occur. So as part of the state review of our zoning or the 40R overlay approval, they had to look at the criteria and approve the criteria for 40R. What we really did was we copied everything from site plan. And as it relates to the design criteria, for the most part, in the planning board review procedure, some of it included the elements that are in special permit, but converted those to site plan for the purposes of 40R review. So it's a simple majority approval. And it's really not about whether their use is allowed, but how it meets those other criteria in the 40R review.
Is it anything specific to affordable housing or?
It's not. It's applicable to all uses that are proposed in the district. The only thing that then becomes relevant as with respect to the affordability of any units that are built as for every certificate of occupancy that's issued for an affordable, a deed restricted affordable housing unit. The state essentially compensates the city for this new density that's built above and beyond what the underlying density would allow. And only if it goes through the 40R process and only if the unit is constructed.
So hearing all that, perhaps the what name are we going for under this application? The Valley CDC, otherwise known as Prospect Place. Would you come forward and provide us? Thanks.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jessica Allen. I am a project manager at I would like to say that Laura Baker would like to be here tonight, but she sends her regards. She's homesick. So I'm going to be standing in her place and providing an overview of our project tonight. With me here tonight, I just want to, there we go. We've got a couple of folks in our project team. First, I just want to clarify the owner is Prospect Place owner LLC. Valley is the majority owner in a partnership with a private entity. Those two individuals that may be on Zoom tonight, which is Amalfi Gallioso and Mauricio Abascal. They are the partners on this project and make up the other half of Prospect Place owner LLC. For Valley tonight is myself. I also have Alexis Wrightnecker here, who is our executive director. And like I said, Laura is at home following via Zoom. For our site designers, we have Berkshire Design Group and I've got Rachel Loffler, sorry, and Jess Snowden Dorf, close enough from Berkshire Design, Rachel and Jess. We'll just go with that. For civil engineer, we have Stonefield Engineering. We have Jake Modesto here. And he'll be our civil getting into the stormwater utilities and traffic. And then via online, we have Austin Design, Tom Chalmers, I believe, is listening in via Zoom. So that makes up our development team. And I'm going to give you an overview of the project. And then both Jake, Rachel and Jess, they'll be getting into more of the details of the site plans and the project application that is before you tonight. So just to give you some site context, I'm sure you all know the site, but just in case you do not, and for maybe people at home, this is the former nursing home on Bridge Road. It's an existing 72,000 square foot building, two-story brick structure constructed in 1971. It has been sitting vacant since 2011 and deteriorating. The site is 6.2 acre site. There's two points of access currently. There's one off of Bridge Road right here and then another off of Hatfield Street. So two existing points of access. What we love as affordable housing developers for this site is its location. You cannot beat its location in terms of its access to a PVA bus stop, access to bus line, really close access to shopping, schools, parks, hospital, bike trail, YMCA, and the Northampton Survival Center. It really is kind of in the middle of everything that our residents are going to need within walking distance. So to that, to us, that's a great benefit of this property. Just to give you an overview of what we are proposing at the site. So we are looking to convert the former nursing home into 60 family apartments. That will be a combination of affordable and workforce apartments. We are looking to do a full gut renovation of the building. So we are leaving the building in place, leaving the footprint, but doing an internal renovation of the building. It very much needs it. We're looking to do some modest exterior modifications. We're still looking at what those may be, but essentially leaving the exterior of the building as it is, dressing it up a little bit to make it look more residential versus institutional, but generally leaving it as is. We are going to be doing a major removal of hazardous materials, asbestos being the main one. We were just notified actually that we received a grant from the underutilized properties program to do, to pay for that asbestos removal. So that's something we just learned of this week. We are also looking to reuse the site amenities as much as possible. So parking is going to remain the same, using the existing utilities in place, really just taking a heavy touch on the interior of the building, but leaving the exterior as much as possible. And then adding, adding additional amenities as needed, which the our civil and our site designers will get into in more detail. We're seeing this as a huge opportunity to do some high efficiency mechanical systems for heating and cooling. We're looking to have this be a fossil fuel free building per the Northampton regulations. And also looking to utilize this ginormous flat roof that we have of a building for PV solar panels. And we're also exploring geothermal as another form of heating and cooling for the building. So all things that are currently exploration. As I noted before, we're looking to do 60 family apartments, combination ranging from studios to three bedrooms. The majority of the apartments will be of larger size, two bedrooms and three bedrooms. The household incomes are going to be ranging from 30% area median income, which is the metropolitan statistical area for Hampden and Hampshire County, up to 100%. So just to give you a sense of what that means for a family of four or 30%, would be around $38,000 household income yearly. And then for 100%, it would be around $91,000. So that's about the range of the tenants that we're looking for this project. Management staffing moving forward, once the, once the property is redevelopment, redeveloped, we're looking to have a professional property manager on site full time, dedicated maintenance staff for the building, and a resident services coordinator, which would work with the tenants to help them find the proper social services that they may need as they're coming into, into this property. I should also wanted to just quickly mention for tenants, we are also looking to house and special populations. We'll have some units set aside for those coming out of homelessness. All of the, all of the apartments will be visitable with somebody in a wheelchair. And we'll have a number of ADA compliant apartments as well. So we've done, as Valley traditionally does, we do extensive neighborhood outreach before we move ahead in any of our projects. And so we've had several onsite meetings and Zoom meetings. We had two in the spring. We had two in the fall. Valley has met with some of the individual butters directly to discuss any concerns with the project. And we've been providing updates to the project through the Ward One Counselor listserv. So we've, we've tried to keep the neighborhood engaged and informed about what we are planning in our tents at the site. So through these different meetings that we held onsite and through Zoom, we had a number of comments that we received from the neighbors that we have addressed in the final plan set. So the, the, the big one, I think, had to do in regards to site access. So our initial concepts, we were looking to have an additional driveway or a new driveway closing off the driveway on Bridge Road and having a new driveway on Prospect. And so we heard very strongly from the neighbors that that was not their preferred way to have the site circulate in terms of traffic. And so through multiple meetings with city, through a traffic study that we commissioned to have done. And in cooperation with the city during a tech review, we've come up with a different alternative, which reutilizes the existing entry off Bridge Road, but modifies it. And, and our site design team and our civil will explain sort of what those changes are and how we've, we've made those changes. But that was the biggest, biggest comment that we heard from the neighborhood in regards to the, to proposed concepts. Again, traffic was a concern. And as I noted, we had commissioned a traffic study. And what we determined is that by keeping, keeping the entrance at Bridge Road and how we might be able to modify that in order to accommodate any traffic flow. So we looked at and our plans are, will be presenting, providing a right turn out only out of the site under Bridge Road, having a new left turn lane at Bridge Road with a new left turn only into the site and relocating the entrance on Hatfield further down to increase the queuing of cars. So those are three changes. And again, the design team will get into the, to more of the details of that. In terms of traffic signals, there was concern about a higher traffic impact and the possible need to have a traffic signal at this location. As our traffic study showed and was in the application packet that you received, that the study showed that there was not going to be a demand that would require traffic light at this location. Another neighborhood comment that we received at our, at our neighborhood meetings was a concern with noise and the volume of noise, especially with truck traffic that was using Bridge Road as a cut through to get to the hill towns. And so initially our site designs had more recreational space and common open space in the front of the site. And as a result of, we commissioned Berkshire Design to do a noise study of looking at this site in comparison to some other sites nearby and to, and to see what the volume of, of the noise was. So based on this, we actually reversed it and put the, the, the open spaces and the common spaces towards the back of the property where it's quieter. Another item that we heard about was pedestrian connectivity. We heard a lot of neighbors talk about how they use the site to connect to other areas of the neighborhood. So we looked at how the site was being used now, proposing a new sidewalk on Prospect, which we will also get into. And looking at how those connections from the site also go into the neighborhood to make sure that people still have the ability to access the site. Couple other things that we heard about was questions regarding drainage with, will there be new impervious surface? We're actually reducing the amount of impervious surface. And we'll have new stormwater infiltration systems, which Jake will get into. There was also a question and concern about the trees. There are a lot of beautiful specimen trees already on site. Will those be saved? And Berkshire will get into our planting plan and the majority of the trees will be retained and we'll be adding a significant amount of new plantings as well. There was also comments about the courtyards in the back and how they face the south. And in the past, when it was a nursing home, how clients, when they would go outside, there wasn't a lot of air circulation back there and it was south facing. It was very hot. So we're looking to have a lot of plantings, sun shades, ways to sort of cool that down and make it a wonderful gathering space for the residents. That's it for the big picture from Valley. I'm going to turn it over to our design team and they will get more into the details about the plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica.
Good evening. It's Jacob Duster with Stonefield Engineering.
That's good, Jacob.
So we're just going to talk briefly about the site in totality. I think everyone's familiar with this. To locate everyone, we're on the south side of Bridge Road orientation of plan in front of you. That's how it's shown. It's important to note that we do have three frontages. The parcel does extend both to Hatfield, Bridge Road and Prospect with majority of our right of way actually being on Prospect. Just over a 6.2 acre parcel with the two access points. Really the intent of this application is to keep what's there. Some of the modifications that we may look at really is taking a look at that. It's a 36,000 square foot building. That's the actual footprint with 72,000 square feet in totality. So the main use change is there, the building centrally located, switching out to be 60 units. The first major change from a site layout standpoint is actually the front. Removing that driveway, that pull up area, the dropping off for the nursing home. And we're removing that impervious coverage. What we're doing is we're replacing that with a small patio area and meandering sidewalks that are going to give that connection to Bridge Road. We're taking the rest of that impervious coverage and we're spreading it around the facility and basically modernizing this building to residential use. That includes the areas banked off for the HVAC systems, a multi-court surface. It's located to the west. So the AC units or conduit areas are located to the east and west side of the building. And then continuing to the west is the multi-court area. That would be a future development, depending on what the tenants, you know, we'll call it the actual programming for that. In addition, we're adding two bike sheds with that impervious coverage located at the northeast corner. And then to the rear of the parcel, almost at the rear property line, you can see it's denoted where the crosswalk is centrally, we'll call it on the main corridor of the building at second point. My cursor, hopefully everyone can see it's down here. So one and two, when it comes to the bike shelters. This being a residential use, people have places to, need places to park. So the application does propose really the remainder of the parking areas to be reutilized as 80 parking spaces. That would give us a 1.3 parking ratio to the number of units. So every unit will have at least one parking space. And then for every three, there's an additional after that. So there's ample parking spaces. There's seven ADA parking spaces within that 80 parking spaces, distributed to the north and to the south, four at the front, three at the rear. In addition to that, within that 80, 80 parking spaces onsite, there are four EV charging stations located by that Saturday bike location that I mentioned before. In a two and two configuration, we'll call it a two now, a two later. So two will be built and then two will be ready for the potential use from the actual tenants. As far as access, moving kind of out and away from the building, the Hatfield right of way access point will be modified. We're actually adding several lands or several parking areas located on the west side of the parcel. We're taking the Hatfield access point, moving it away from the Hatfield and Bridge Road intersection, lodging a larger queue in the right of way. It'll allow access in and out of the property. In addition, taking a sidewalk connection and taking it and connecting into the Hatfield right of way. Taking us along Bridge, which I think is the major improvement when it comes from a site access standpoint. Really what we're taking the driveway and almost moving at 30, 40 feet to the east so that the access point actually aligns a little bit better through a through movement for the site. It's a left in, right in driveway that'll be restricted when it comes to its size. It'll be a 12 foot wide lane. The applicant understands the volume of traffic going through the facility. It's about even split in the AM and PM when it comes to flow through there. So what we're doing is two, two methods to mitigate some of the traffic and the additional movements that would be into the property. We're proposing all street improvements, which included basically dedicated left turn bay. So if someone was heading, it would be westbound on the plan going across the page from, from right to left. There will be a designated left turn bay so that through traffic would not be impaired by anyone trying to make a left into the property. We've ran a fire truck through the, the actual facility to make that with the new driveway configuration. And to prevent people from making that left turn. So we're actually removing a turn altogether. And we are putting in a physical concrete curb with landscaping to ensure that no one's making that left out of there. It's really forcing everyone to make the right. So we have that improvement on Bridge Road, which I think at the end of the day is going to help improve some of these, the site circulation that's there and reduce some of the conflict points that we have with this development. As we continue on Prospect Ave.
No, from Hatfield Street headed kind of south?
Well, yeah, I think that's Hatfield, like going down toward Walmart. Are they allowed to cross there?
Going straight across? There's, there's no, there's no talk about restricting that access at this point. We, we did the traffic analysis. That was one to two, maybe during a peak hour scenarios. The actual number of times that happens is actually quite limited. It was, it was the left actually outs, which are unrelated to our site. It just traffic that's there. So we're not changing any of the movements on the north side of that access point at this point. That's within the Stantec review letter that, that basically built in this, sorry, the Stantec traffic report that was built into what we're doing.
Yeah.
Just to clarify that, there, there's, right now, there's a left turn movement allowed southbound Hatfield onto Bridge. So essentially that's not changing. So this is just lines it up so it's not offset and it's safer across. And so it wouldn't restrict. So given that you can still make a left onto a bridge going eastbound, you could still come straight across as well.
But sorry, so when exiting the site, that concrete landscape area talking, forcing people right, you're not going to be able to exit the site and go straight through to Hatfield.
You can enter this at this site.
Site, but you can't.
Okay. You would have to hop several curves and make that left. So we've done everything we can to make sure that everyone's just taking a right out of here. Yeah, of course.
Turn your mic on.
Where the, where the residents going to enter?
Oh, there's actually multiple entrances throughout the building. Let's hear it. There is one here. There's one here. On the net side, and there's several in the rear as well. So there's going to be different areas where tenants can get in and out of the building.
And what are you doing? Like my, my mother-in-law was in Alba House for, for some time. And one of the problems there was that like the, the, the number of entrances into the building in my mind made it so that there was sort of a a bad element could come and go very easily.
So I think what we're talking about is like controlled access to the building. I think we talked about the management for that. I think that would be covered.
But you can't, but you're not having like four people at all of those entrances. So like the problem is, is that you can literally have someone holding the door open for.
Yeah. Typically at our properties, we usually have one main point of access and then the other ones are emergency exits. So I believe in this scenario, depending, I, I, I believe it's in the rear is where the main point of entrance has been discussed for this property.
Okay. So that's not, so it's one, I, I understand that there's emergency egresses. That's that's separate from what I'm talking about. I'm saying that the main entrance. So if someone were to park on this, this, I guess, whatever the
The Prospect side on the side there.
Yeah, that they would have to walk all the way around. Okay.
Just to be clear, I don't think we are restricting where they're putting the doors to this building.
I'm not restricting where we're putting the doors. I'm just saying that, that I know that from my personal experience dealing with a bad element at Salvo House that was coming and going and causing havoc. It was through the fact that you could go in and out of these doors.
I think the door is probably right with the ADs bases.
Okay.
Since they have to be the closest to the main door.
Yeah, but there's different.
Okay, let's, Sam, can we hold our questions from the board till he walks through most of the presentation?
Maybe. Yes.
Thanks.
No problem. So just taking this, we talked access points to and from the property. We're going to continue with the pedestrian improvements that we're making, which is actually on Prospect as part of the comprehensive plan. This actually was targeted to have sidewalk basically extending all down Prospect from our property and further south. So there'd be actually a third way, a third way for access through the community. So our applicant is basically doing that over this 500 feet of, of frontage along Prospect. We're adding a four foot concrete landscape or concrete sidewalk all along that. We're actually proposing integrating the additional pedestrian connection points to the building. So there's two in this location. So in totality, we'll actually have two on Prospect, one on Bridge, one in Hatfield. So plenty of pedestrian abilities to connect in and out, obviously checking the box when it comes to bike accessibility. This wasn't targeted as we'll call it the higher number of bikes through here, but with the applicant is still implementing a lot of bike storage and available for tenant residents for later on use. So when that does, any of the bike improvements do happen, you know, this, this bill will fit right in.
Clarify where there's batuminus and where is concrete sidewalk?
So the concrete would be located on the Prospect, which is on the right side of the plan. And what was proposed was the, the batuminus on the left side, which was on Hatfield. So that's what DPW is likely to see is in the, the left side there, the Hatfield. That was all, it was all concrete, but otherwise you little patchwork from the new improvements. So Hatfield will be asphalt and then the new one on Prospect will be all concrete.
Hatfield will be asphalt.
Correct. That's consistent with what's out there.
That's a DPW decision or sorry to interrupt.
Yeah, no, it was a recommendation within the letter that was sent around. I think it was
I think it would be the opposite.
It's existing.
Yeah. Otherwise it looked a little patchy because we're taking that driveway and moving it south. So any new sidewalk should be concrete. In that scenario, it kind of looked a little patchwork. So the idea is to keep it consistent, at least on that frontage.
I don't know who makes that kind of call, Carolyn.
Well, we can go, it's, DPW is recommending that modification and we can go through the DPW comments after the presentation.
And yeah, really that's, that's the called above ground improvements. So I think the subsurface stuff when it comes to utilities, can removing the gas line that's located to Bridge that'll be removed as part of the project. There'll be a new service for the electrical at the rear of the building, a new transformer for the facility. We're reusing the water taps on Bridge Road for the facility and then refurbishing the sanitary lead that does exit the building to Prospect and been working with the DPW on all those items. Also from a stormwater standpoint, obviously the decrease in, in pervious coverage actually also decreases the runoff. So with increasing pervious services that allows water to infiltrate into the ground. So we're adding an element of recharge naturally and then reducing runoff rates from the site. Some of, from a volume and from a rate standpoint, that's going down. In addition, from a water quality standpoint, it's the TSS rule that we're actually implementing. There'll be two water quality units. So all the water that is captured from the side, from the, the parking lot areas will be captured, sent through to water quality units. There are subsurface. Those will then be treated and actually have a cleaner water leaving the site into the public system, which actually is a drain that routes through from, from Prospect to Bridge. So that's onsite cleaning it. So from a quantity and quality standpoint, there'll be significant improvements from the development. It is a, a new facility. So we are proposing lighting fixtures. It's going to go to our lighting design as much as possible. Everything has been directed downwards. These are downlit lights, 30K, which gives that, that yellery hue for the lights. They're LED, energy efficient. Just looking at the fixtures, again, they're scattered around the property, directed inwards. The lighting levels are low. There's no glare off the property. They're mounted at 16 feet for the, the area lights. There's 19 of them. And then for the wall sconces around some of the primer of the building to unit sidewalk, there are 10, nine between 10 and 12 feet varying around the building. So again, the idea is just to illuminate some of the sidewalk areas and the, and the courtyards, which Berkshire Design will get into a little bit. But that's the application from a civil standpoint. I think the Berkshire is going to talk a little bit more about the green infrastructure that was being put in place.
Thank you. So just as part of the process for folks, we'll hear the presentation from uh, the applicant. Then we'll clarify a few things here from the board. Then we'll open it up to the public for comment. Okay.
Um, I'm Rachel Luffler with Berkshire Design Group and I'm here with uh, we've been working as a team on this project. So she may pipe in here if I miss something. Um, as Jake said, uh, we are excited to be working with a great site. What's there today? Um, has a lot of significant trees with um, good uh, good ecological value and great presence. When we were there on site walking around, we heard birds on, in, in some of the pine trees that were near the building, even in spite of the noise that we heard from, from the traffic. Um, so for this project, uh, we are going to be removing some of the trees. There are twenty-three significant trees on site um, that are twenty inch caliper or greater. We're going to remove seven of those and those are, those are for, for the purpose of the new um, Bridge Road safety access. We're gonna lose three, three honey locusts, some apples and some oak trees for that new, new point of entry. In addition, um, we've looked at, we've walked the site and looked closely. Some of the trees have a bittersweet infestation that we'll be taking down um, for, to help the trees. Some of the trees uh, needed a lot of pruning for under, some of the branches were dead from those bittersweet um, methods. So the site is gonna get, get a little bit of a facelift and uh, we're gonna be able to retain a lot of the existing character of the site. We're excited to be working with a lot of mature trees. Um, so as we think about adding new trees to the site. Um, this, this drawing shows how the mature size. There, there's some existing oaks that we're gonna retain on site that are really nice in this corner, some immature pines. Some, these are the pines that we noticed the birds hanging out under one nice fall day and a couple more oaks and maples. Um, as a site strategy, we're, we are going to be bringing in um, mostly New England natives, trying to focus on Massachusetts, Massachusetts natives. Um, and using plants for their functional quality of screening and habitat and, and bringing a little bit more diversity to the site. As a strategy, we are going to be keeping that open character of the landscape surrounding the building. If the budget allows, uh, we are proposing a three foot high berm, which is a landform um, at Bridge Road um, on the project side of the sidewalk. So to help mitigate some of that noise and create a little bit of screening into the site. That will be planted with um, sedges and grasses and um, really light shade trees like Aspen and birch and hot porn. Uh, then as we move into the interior of the site, the edges of the building will have um, more, more screening, more, more evergreen shrubs and ground covers around to help with screening the residents from looking in and looking out. And then along Prospect Ave, we have applied a pretty dense planting strategy along that new sidewalk corridor. What's there now are Arborvitie that on, you know, on plan, they look lush and green, but when you get out there and you walk along them, there quite a few bare spots that you can look right through. So that new sidewalk is a new opportunity. It really diversify that edge and um, create, create a nice screen.
So just to clarify, Rachel, are the, are the Vita gonna, that hedge gonna be removed?
Correct, yes. Um, and looking at this, this, this plan here um, shows the footprint of each tree and calls out each, each individual species. Um, the sections here, I don't know if you guys the sections on the side show.
You minimize the zoom.
This, this elevation is what, what someone from Prospect Ave would see looking at, looking at the sidewalk. Where there's a range of evergreen shrubs like shamrock and uh, mountain laurel um, with a bunch of um, flowering native um, shrubs intermixed um, with high bush blueberries and maple leaf fiber and um. Uh, this section here shows what that would look like. So this would be traffic along Prospect Ave, the sidewalk, the planting border and then the parking on the interior site, again, giving that buffer between the parking, um, the sidewalk and the neighbors across the street. On the interior of the site, um, we have two courtyards existing that we are going to be renovating and to provide different types of amenities for residents. Um, the courtyard on, on the right, we, we envision to be more of a reflective space with a walking path, seating nooks and a, a landform in the middle planted with um, shade-loving natives and um, service berry. So a gentle rise in the land, surrounded by vegetation, creating places for contemplation, reflection. We envision a resident being able to sit and read or think um, by themselves or with a friend. Um, in the other courtyard, we're, and we're focusing on active play for small, small children that might, might live there or might be um, family members of residence. Uh, we have um, more of a natural theme with um, log stepping stones and uh, log climbing structures and a um, manufacturer's play structure with a slide and components for, for younger kids. Areas are then surrounded by areas for seating for parents also to observe and the areas fenced in with a four foot high cedar fence. We have a shade shuck structure for this area also providing some shade for, for folks out there. The third area adjacent to that is a more of a gathering area. It's enclosed. It's a lawn area enclosed with um, with uh, mountain laurel and other ground covers, um, some birch trees and then picnic tables, um, including an ADA accessible um, picnic table for one area. And then as Jake mentioned before, we do have two areas of bike shelters and we have two strategies for the bike shelters. The area to the northeast of the building, we are proposing uh, a standard off-the-shelf shelter that can hold up to thirty bicycles, um, fully enclosed with a roof. Then the area to the south of the, of the building, we would looks, um, this is a rendering by um, Austin Design. A custom-built shelter that would also hold about thirty bikes, but also would hold a shed for any of the maintenance supplies needed for maintaining the site um, during the winter or, or summer. Look at this.
Thank you.
Show us if I'm, I'm an eighth grade kid and I want to go to the Walmart. How do I get there without getting killed? Anyone can answer that.
This is a test. So are you living here? Are you?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. And I guess it is a little hard to see on this screen. Can you see the cursor?
Yeah.
So you could run out the front door underneath the shade sail, run down the sidewalk here. Um, and hop on the sidewalk in front of the berm and go, you're trying to go to
Walmart is north.
Oh. Yeah.
You're, you're gonna, you're gonna take what's already in place. There's actually a lot of existing um, sidewalks. So we're connecting to Bridge Road. Bridge Road sidewalk continues all the way down. You're gonna, you're gonna take Bridge.
But, but Walmart is right north.
Yeah, yeah.
No one's gonna go down Bridge Road. I think, uh, this is not a problem for you guys. I think this is a great project. The city needs to do something before someone gets killed. Every kid and teenager is gonna go on Hatfield Street and care. I am one of the cars that all with us do that. Zip on Hatfield Street. There's no sidewalks. It's incredibly dangerous situation we're creating. We need to do something. I mean, the city needs to.
I think we're all familiar with that and we all know that they haven't at this point addressed any kind of crosswalk, any kind of signalized crossing. So the assumption is that
Walk and sidewalks. Putting potentially like a hundred kids.
Yep.
And it's a, it's a building.
Yep. So it's, it's a big concern for all of us today. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, any other questions before we open it up to the public?
Yeah, no, I, I did want to go back set. Where, where is the crosswalk?
There is no crosswalk.
It, it's bad engineering practice to have a mid-block crossing on a high-traffic road so that we just promote people from crossing uh, with high volume. So we try to actually avoid that, especially if it's leading no sidewalk. So the actually, yeah, so, yeah.
At Jackson Street.
No one's gonna do that. No.
Uh, yeah.
No thirteen-year-old's gonna do that. Every thirteen-year-old's gonna run.
So, right. So, so, no David, we get it. We get it. So should we close the hearing or should we?
No.
Right.
Oh, no, I'm just pointing out. I think, yeah. So let's, no, so.
But, and then I want to go back to this thing. So she just said we're go, going out the front door. Which was there, but then I heard the front door was down at the bottom.
Let me correct me, or north side door.
Which is exit only?
No, they, they, they're gonna be access control. I believe you can get in and out of the, the two, the two primary uh, the front and the rear.
I think this is a bigger, I, I mean, I, I, as someone whose mother-in-law was terrorized.
So.
Please, I'd like to finish. He was terrorized by this. I think that having multiple entrances that people can, can come and go in, is, is a disaster waiting to happen. And I think uh, those types of things, when we're talking about a socialist, social engineered project, it's our job as board members to actually put our, put our life experiences in play. So I do have a problem with if the fact that you can enter in here, there, 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 there's.
Yes. So, so again, you know, for our own security and property management, um, we have locked entries. Residents have a key to get in, a fob, something like that, that gives them secure access. Um, there will be, I received clarification from Laura that there will be um, keyed entry at the front and the back, but you need to keyed get in. It's just not a, a free-for-all. Anybody can come and go. Residents have the ability and the way that we design our buildings is that there's security measures so that they buzz people in, they recognize them. Um, so we take our property management very seriously and that is how we, we manage the rest of our buildings that we are currently building.
So in that way, like there would be a record of who buzzed in, who.
I don't know if we keep records per se, but that, but the residents themselves, there's a typically um, a, a security measure, whether it's a um, a video or audio where they can recognize who is coming to the door, who is buzzing their door to be let in and they let that, their visitor in. But the building will be locked and residents will need a key to get in and out.
Very similar to situations at the lumberyard, Live One Five Five, uh, the newer um, complexes like that. So.
I, I, I don't know anyone who lives there. I knew, do know people who lived in Salva House and I do know people who live in Michael's house. And the one entrance of Michael's house limits any criminal activity that can go on that property.
So I, we, maybe everybody knows this already, but Valley currently owns six properties, five in Northampton, one in Amherst. Total of eighty-one units. We have around a hundred and sixty people currently. Um, we use a third-party property management company. They have offices in Florence. They have onsite staff. They are on our properties every day. Um, we have intercom systems and then any of our newer developments, we're gonna have intercom systems and security cameras. And somebody will be keeping an eye on that. So we, we deal with this already and haven't had issues with any of our properties, some of which we've owned for twenty years. Okay.
Other large concerns before we open it up to the public.
You just tell us where the bus stop is.
Bus stop is actually relocated if you're taking the right out. Uh, it's about twenty feet from the edge that uh, curb radio. So I'm just gonna go, if you can see the cursor right here and just circling it, that's where the curb by, it's, it's already been installed too.
It's at the Valley, also the Valley Bike.
Yes.
Location. Can you blow up that street area for us that shows the left-hand turn? The right-hand turn, the new driveway, the bus stop.
I am trying to go to that one little snip here. Give me one second, everybody.
I have a PDF of your civil plans if you need them.
Cause you know, you must understand that's probably gonna be our biggest concern.
I think this shows it's you, this is the reconfigured drive, a little more detailed uh, zoomed in. It was, it's one of the inserts from the uh, the plan set. But what you're seeing is, this is the exit that's proposed. You have that right turn bay here and then right here is the, the bike shelter and the bus stop over here. Just trying to circle it here.
And as the bus pulls over, um, what's the, is there clearance on the other side of the bus?
So, so that's actually, if you can look at the configuration here, um, that, this is in the conversation this whole time with DPW about this, actually the bay and the way it's been turned. So if in that scenario where someone is, the bus is pulled off there, uh, someone's actually able to sneak around um, uh, into the striped area, uh, to maneuver through. Again, that's, it's a rare, it's a rare uh, occasion. Um, but this is, I think, the conversation with DPW to have this, this configuration in particular. It is, it's a quick one, you know, it, that, that stop is, doesn't have a high volume. So it's, it's quick in and out if the bus is stopped.
Well, sixty people.
It'll have a higher. It, well, for the, for the, the, the units don't necessarily generate the same number of people at any given time. So if there's one or two people, you know, at any time, it's a quick stop. Open the doors, they're on, close, off. So.
It, it's, you know, it's unfortunate. There's Valley Bike also. There's no bike laying on Bridge Road either way. So people will be on the sidewalk riding their bikes probably and then trying to come into traffic. There's just, we, we wanna, certainly, we all love the project, but we're very, very mindful of all the conflicts that we're kind of presenting here for pedestrians, bicyclists and autos. Yeah, right. Okay. All right. Um, anything else before we turn it over to the public? I've got a bunch of other questions. We can talk about, about the design. All right. Well, at this point then, thank you. Um, why don't we open it up to anyone in the audience who would like to come and speak either in favor or some point about the application? If you just state your name and your address, that would be helpful for our minutes.
My name is Michael Kayling. Um, I am a resident of War Burton Way, which is right behind where this project is being done. For forty-five years, I lived on Prospect Avenue. I just sold that house and moved over to War Burton Way. I was elected president of the War Burton Way Homeowners Association. So I am here in regards to talking about impact on War Burton Way or Prospect Woods. And first of all, my opening statement, I want to congratulate you folks for putting this together. I mean, I've looked at that, matter of fact, a hundred years ago, my mother was a resident at that nursing home. So I knew the facility. I've lived in North, my whole life and very, what you guys are doing, I compliment you. But um, having said that, um, where the traffic flow that everybody's so concerned about, uh, one of my issues was having a, a curb cut on Prospect Avenue. I see that's not gonna occur according to what I'm seeing here tonight. It's just gonna be on Bridge Road. Uh, I will say that the traffic count, if you've done one on Bridge Road is horrendous. Uh, coming uh, down from Florence towards North Hampton. And that's where the primary entrance and exits are gonna be to that facility. And as you stated, George, that it's gonna get a lot busier once the residents are there. Um, the controversy right now with that bus being there and people entering actually, and a car trying to get out of that facility, uh, looks like it could be a problem. Not saying is, I'm just saying it could be. The, the residents that are gonna be on Prospect Avenue are gonna have a whole enlightenment in regards to when the trees are taken down and that sidewalk is put down. Uh, safety-wise, as far as the sidewalk going down Prospect Avenue, I can, I agree a hundred percent. But the other factor I have with our location for Prospect Woods is one of our concerns is with all that traffic flow that is gonna happen at the facility, that everybody likes to look for a shortcut. And the shortcut may become our facility, meaning where they're gonna try to cut through from Hatfield Street over to Prospect Avenue to bypass getting near that area. We're worried about our traffic flow in regards to our residents walking from unit to unit in regards to having In regards to having the traffic build up and use it as a cut through. So, uh, I just wanna, uh, as a. A person who just paid a lot of money to buy a unit there, uh, I'm protecting my own personal investment as well as. Being president of the group and protesting, protecting the other thirty-four units that are in that place. Um, this is the beginning. I realize that. It's just getting started. This is a project that's probably not gonna hit the ground for another couple of years, but this planning part of it is where you come in. And I, I just wanna say beyond record that, uh, I'm concerned. In regards to that traffic flow problem. And I'm not looking at having a gated community in regards to shutting off Prospect Woods. Uh, so that the cars can't go through there. But for the future, it's, it's something that we would look at. But I just wanted to, uh, be here as a, as a concerned citizen. And, uh, I'll leave you my card with my information, so I have the spelling. Thank you.
Yeah. And, and in Mr. Kayling, right now, there's signage at both entrances to War Burton Way that says private drive.
Correct, right, right, okay, yeah.
It doesn't say keep out, but it says it's a private drive.
Right, but we do have, uh, once in a while, a car will zip through there.
Yep.
And, uh, and it's, it's, I just said, right now, it's at a manageable level.
Right.
Uh, but their concern is the impact this will have in the future.
Thanks, thank you.
Any other question? Thank you.
Please.
Hi, I'm MJ Adams. I live at one fifty-five Pleasant Street. This is a FOB. I use it to get in and out of my building. It feels very secure. And I'm very happy to show anybody how it works. Um, I want to just speak highly of this project. I think Valley Community Development Corporation does. High-quality developments. I'm a neighbor to the lumberyard downtown. Uh, this housing is critically needed. Um, my father spent his last days on that site in the year, and I think in two thousand and three, two thousand and four, very familiar with it. I'm really delighted to see that it's moving forward, that there's gonna be some additional housing built there. And that that building that has been a real blight on that corner is gonna be put to good use. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'll, uh, note that there is a couple of letters that the planning office received in support of the application. I don't think there were any letters that were kind of opposed to the application at this point, so. Um, and those are in our record, and I think most of the planning members have read that. Okay, dope. Well, then, um, we'll come back to the planning board questions at this point. Um. Why don't we hold on to the, uh, the conflicts on Bridge? Bridge Street, Bridge Road for a little bit? Is it Bridge Road or Bridge Street before, Road, thank you. Um, maybe that's something we could also ask the city to do is, for once, change those names, yeah. Any other, I, Mr. Kayling, I was just here from War Burton Way. I know that there's a long fence on that south part of the property. I imagine that's gonna remain and that belongs to this applicant, that long fence that separates. On the south side.
That's what you remain.
Okay. Okay. Other questions for the planning board members?
It seems like, it seems like a great project. It, it's sort of. It, it, it seems like a great project, um. You know, obviously, we're, we're not talking about, uh, the bridge street sidewalk situation, but, um. Obviously, we'll just have to, the city will have to change some of its priorities and about where it builds some sidewalks now. Good luck.
I have a question, George. Um, the, what are the four little pads that are on the exterior of the building? There's, there's four little.
Round the.
Yeah, round the.
So those are actually the banks, uh, for the AC and HVAC systems.
Okay. Thought they were shown on the roof. The condensing units were shown on the roof, no?
So that's gonna back and forth right now. We want to call it, we call it the worst case scenario, it's on the ground, uh, it's showing screen. Um, in time, we're trying to work out the system, put some of that on the roof, um, but right now, we're at risk, it's on the ground.
Okay. So they'd be, all of the units would have their AC, um, units in one of those four locations. So there'd be quite a bit, quite a bit in each of those locations.
That's as small as we can, we can get. It's been a back and forth.
I, yeah. Yeah.
It's been a long conversation how to reduce that, what binds them all.
Sure.
The challenge too also is to have this fabulously key group to put PV solar on.
Right.
Use that real estate or mechanical systems that are losing the ability to put PV. Having an all-electric building, we want to maximize the PV as much as possible to save our operating costs in the future. So it, there has been.
Yeah.
It's faced hours and hours and hours and hours of conversations on how to best get the most highly efficient. Of, um, system that we can afford.
Does look like you are showing some shielding around it, though, some planting around it.
If it ends up having to be on the ground, the idea with that, it would be, it would be, um, buffer.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
So with those, with those spaces there, like the apartments that are the, the units that are, would be in. Would that take away from the number of units that you could have because there wouldn't be windows there?
No.
No.
Um, while we're on electricity, I think you mentioned that there would be four EV charging stations. Sixty spaces, given where we're going with electric vehicles. Do you think that's sufficient at this time? Um, or i- is it a cost factor? You're not, I know you're not doing a lot of work on the parking lot surface. Um.
I think it's a demand at this point, so right now, we're, we're going, it's gonna be two now.
Okay, would you come up so we can kind of get it to the Zoom? Thanks.
Yeah, no problem. Um, so it's, it's a demand situation. Right now, what we're doing is we're stubbing for four. Two will be built right away, and there'll be another two banked for later in case the demand goes up. Um, so I'm sure if, if more and more of the demand goes up, you know, more would be added, but at this time, it's two, two for, for now, and then two for later, uh, if the demand comes up.
That's four spaces.
Four total. I- in, you know, we'll say if, if it's there.
The unit, the unit, a single space unit?
It's a, it's a double space, so what, so it's one, it's one package, um, for two spaces, yeah.
Two spaces now, and two spaces later, for a total of maybe four.
Correct, yes.
Are you gonna install any, um. You know, conduit or whatever for, uh, potential, I think you'll probably do more.
Yeah, yeah, so that, there, there, that's what the two is for, so we're. One, the one, the one is being installed right now. The conduit for the second, the second one is being installed as well at the same time.
I think we'd like to request more. It's four, two right now for sixty spaces, doesn't really seem to be adequate. Um, I would like to request a few more. If you're just stubbing up, I don't think you have to install them now. But I, I think it'd be important.
Talk with the applicant.
Yep.
Carolyn, can you remind us what the standards are?
It's for a new parking lot, which this might not.
Yeah, oh, it's just in a new parking lot.
It's a parking lot for a new use.
For more than twenty-five.
For more than twenty-five parking spaces for new lots. Um, I think it's one per fifteen parking spaces. Um, but I'm pulling that up. But yes, it's for, um.
So that would be.
The creation of a new parking lot.
Right.
So we meet the standard under the zoning, even though we have a.
You're meeting the standard, correct, okay.
Oh, no, wait, they don't have sixty spaces. They have sixty units. They have eighty spaces.
Thank you.
So I think six would be closer.
Did you follow that math?
Yeah, I did.
I think what we could do is, um, you know, stay on plan where we would, we would provide four, two, and then we could potentially stub out for an additional two to have six potentially. I think, you know, we have to see where the demand is. We don't know how many of these tenants are actually gonna have cars.
Appreciate that, yeah.
These are low-income tenants, and so we, we tend to find that most of the time, the, the parking ratio is a half a space. For unit, um, cause that's, that's how many people have cars. So I think we would want to kind of wait and see to see where the demand is first, but I think it could be easy enough to. The, the conduits in place.
Right, right. And, and I think part of our, the, part of our planning board, uh, charge is also to look down the road five years from now, ten years from now. You do have workforce housing there. It's not all low income, so there will, EV, hopefully, vehicles will come down in price, um. We just wanna make sure.
Technology will completely change in twenty-five years and will be.
Yep.
Flying.
Maybe you're.
Yeah, we can only hope. Um, while we're talking about this area, it looks like. The ADA space there is sharing with one of the EV spaces, which I don't think I've ever seen before. Would you consider separating them? So you have just an ADA space, just EV spaces? Number of ADA parking spaces, again, in case someone was, uh, handicap accessible in that location, the EV station is not only, um. We're gonna be ready for EV, but it's also handicap accessible. So the idea was, was not to double dip in what's required. We far exceed the number, um, for ADA parking spaces, just the Northern Bank. It's, this is just making sure that that space is also accessible. So that's, so only, um, someone with an ADA plate with an electric car can park there? Uh, that would be, because it's, it's a residence, we actually would, the applicant would be able to take that as part of the management company. So if, if that's the scenario, you know, I'm sure that, that, that is based in particular would be assigned, so. It seems odd to me. It, it is, it is common, a lot of what bylaws is to have five percent of the actual EV spaces, uh, to be ADA accessible or ADA ready. Um, same as that we'd have EV-ready spaces. So it is in line with what we're seeing around the country, um, is to have one of those available. Um, and the intent is not to, you know, limit EV. The intent is to make that more accessible. The, the applicant is not trying to get out, putting EV space or having that used. It's, it's just making it more, we'll call it, you know, renter-friendly. So is that how it will be striped when it's constructed? At some, yeah. Yeah.
So under the current design, there's a one EV spot. If you don't have an X, an ADA, you know, tag, there's one spot you can use.
I- if that was assigned, that one would have to be assigned in particular. And in the striping, again, we could remove that. If that's the boarding client, it's, it's not a, a sticking point. It shouldn't just be, they'll call it compliant and follow industry trends. Yeah, to me, I would, you know, have the access aisle for an ADA space, but just have it for EVs. Cause otherwise, I don't, you'd have to fulfill both requirements to park in the space. And it. We have seen projects like this. Usually, the, the number of parking spaces are about one per unit. So you're saying it's half a, half a space per unit sometimes. Um, so this does seem like a lot of parking for this. Um, for this use. I'm wondering. Why only sixty bike spaces for sixty apartments? That doesn't seem like enough bike storage to me personally. If we have multiple bedroom apartments, families. Um. I just, I think we might need more bike storage.
I think, I think the hope is to start with sixty and then adjust over time to meet the demand. I mean. If you, if you encounter that you're maxing out your bike parking, is that something that you guys would be willing to consider in the future? Yeah, accommodating. We wouldn't want to double ninety, ninety parking spaces to only have half of them used on site.
Just to clarify, you don't have to have covered storage. You could also have bike storage that's not sheltered. Um, so I don't know if that's what you're getting at, Chris, is, you know, because the requirement, there is a requirement for sheltered storage based on units, but at your. Um, meeting that with the number, so any additional ones wouldn't have to have a structure for them.
Well, I don't know how it's, it's, I mean, cause kids' bikes, they, obviously very small, but they take up a whole, whole s- space. Is there something we can do for kids? I'm looking at you because you're.
No, and, and if you go around the complexes that we have in the city, you see most of the bike storages are maxed out. Um. And, and because often what happens is they don't only put bikes there, but they put, um, large wagons there. They'll put different kinds of things. And I guess the last, um, shelter you showed us on the south side, it was a bike shelter in combination with a storage facility for. Not lawnmowers. I assume you have a contractor to do that, but some kind of. So again, that concerns me a little bit that that storage facility may leak over into the bike shelter, too. Um. Which.
And other, other projects, we have had a need for things like, um, salt. Um, salt for on property management, sometimes hoses, sometimes rigs. Some, some of that may be, if there's an off-site, uh, landscape maintenance company, they may be providing that, but it, it is nice to have that capability. Um, so if there is anything that would require outside storage, it's already thought in on the plan.
Yeah.
So.
You know, I, I, I appreciate that you think down the road, if the demand calls for it, we'll address it then, but that's the hard part for the planning board, unless we ask you to do it upfront. It just may not happen down the road, whether it's an EV station or a bike shelter or more planting, so. Um. I'm not sure what our compromise is, is to ask for some unprotected bike stations, but. Because there's, uh, people won't really want to be bringing their bikes inside the house. There's no personal storage space other than in the apartment. Um, bikes do get ruined if they stay out in the rain and the snow. Um. I don't know what that cost factor does to the applicant of adding another shelter. There are certainly enough open, there's certainly enough space. Around the project to, to add one.
The shelter, I, I think it's, it's probably a product of operating the site, making this actually, uh, friendly to the renters. It's a rental facility, so. As much as people are living there, there's gonna need to be a, a need to draw people to this, so. If in a scenario, like, again, this is a ma- it's third-party managed, they're gonna try to have, we'll call it the additional improvements, the EV charging stations, if it's required. Uh, in a scenario where we're, we're filled with biking parking spaces, that means everyone basically would have a car, everyone have a bike. They're gonna implement that to bring more people or bring people in. At some, some point, someone's gonna leave. If those bike parking spaces are filled, they're gonna implement that as part of their improvements for the facility. As, as, it's just what you do as a management company to ensure that you're, you're drawing in, uh, you know, renters. It's, it's part of the checks and balances, um, as part of one of these applications.
So I, I also just want to clarify, I mean, no, they're, they have, um. Uh, the, their demand for parking, they're saying is fifty percent of typically what a residential unit would have, which they've shown, and it, and they have other sites around. Town that have that. Um, they're also far exceeding our bike standard, so I'm not sure, our bike. Storage standard, and they, and all of it is sheltered, so that's well above what's required by the zoning. Um, in addition to providing, um, sixty bike spaces, that's well above what's required. Um, so I think, eh, um, you know, if you've, um. The other piece is management that they're describing. So if there are bikes that are sort of strewn everywhere on the property. That's probably gonna be something that they're gonna want to address in terms of, you know, essentially corralling them and putting them there. I just, um. Would, um, caution about requiring some additional number of bike storage spaces when the zoning doesn't dictate that.
Is it possible to just, uh, have a plan in place for. If you guys were going to, in the future, needed to build a, a spot, you could put. Like you'd have, you'd have a, a place in place or a site. Where you could put this, uh, build out.
Well. Well, I would say that the site is pretty generous in terms of available real estate for something like this, so I'm not sure if we would want to. Put it on a plan as of right now. It's not like it's a, a tight constrained urban site. There's plenty of lawn and there's plenty of open space, and I think. Often what we like to do is we like to see how, um, tenants are utilizing the property. So if we, if we see that there is a location where it seems to make sense to put additional, um, bike storage. Then we would, we would accommodate that at the time.
Good. Um, could somebody point out often, one of our, 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 our things that we look at is the, the recycling and the refuse container? Um, could somebody point that out to us on the design?
So we have a, we have an enclosed dumpster enclosure here on this corner of the property. Um, it would be screened with a cedar fence and a gate. It's right here. It's right here. Yeah, um, and a lines for a a front loading hauler. Jake and his team tested out circulation movements to make sure that it could um accommodate that, but the. Hauler would come in, we could access um each of those dumpsters and then and exit through the site.
And that's the landscape buffer on the corner on Prospect that'll.
Yeah, so we continue to have um buffer there. There are two existing mature pine trees that will be retained also to help screen. Screen that. Um, and then we still have the, there's a maple grove buffer also existing behind it.
Are there trash rooms in the building or? Are there trash rooms in the building or are people walking? Across the site to do that on a daily basis?
Do we individually dump our trash in the containers or is it managed centrally in the building? And and you size this somehow with the industry experts. Sixty units is a lot, so maybe three, four large containers. And that enclosure will be large enough to manage that. Okay. The industry experts. United Waste and others. Before we got into stormwater at all, I was gonna ask Carolyn who just stepped outside to talk about the DPW comments. Um, which I haven't seen at this point, but. Not that I remember seeing. Would you like to answer?
Yeah.
Could you describe quickly what the plan is for snow removal on and or storage on the site?
Up and down, up and down.
That's okay. We're sharing the stand tonight.
Yeah.
No, so the idea of this, it's it's going to be normal. It's going to be simply pushing uh certain spaces, plenty of open space, plenty of green space. So we're going to be pushing these into areas. Designated some of the areas you can actually see on the north side to uh someone would come in off of Bridge Road, they'd be able to push it. Um, as you continue directly, I guess we plan right uh as you go, we'll call it para perpendicular. Um, to the building frontage or par- parallel with the building frontage across. Let's see if I can point to it. Up in here, there's areas here, there's areas in the locations. And other locations throughout the property. So there's plenty of areas to push snow uh away from these these uh these parking spaces. Again, part of third party management of the facility. That's all going to be taken care of for the residents.
Um, Carolyn, you said there were some DPW comments.
DPW a- as typical asked to have revised plans uh submitted at least fifteen days. Uh, before requesting a building permit. Uh, to address um comments that they had about detail sheets, the site plan, um connect. Clarifying connections. There are a couple of the um more specific comments relate to the sidewalk along Prospect Street. Um, that they're showing that it come, it is to be installed against um the two minutes curb. And DPW um. Won't allow those two materials don't work well together. So. They're uh proposing three alternatives to what's shown on Prospect. That would be either granite curb. Um, up against um cement concrete or um installation of uh bituminous um concrete. Or offsetting the sidewalk by twelve inches from the back of the curb so that there's a green strip between. There are, they also made comments uh related to the alignment of the sidewalk, because if you see on the plans. It curves around the um utility poles and there are three utility pole. Three to four utility poles along that whole stretch. So their recommendation is actually just to. At any rate, pull uh so you have a straight line of sidewalk. Just align it with the back of that pole. So and that would also accomplish the twelve inch sort of separation from the back of the curb. So um that is the, those are the comments about the sidewalk. They also. Um, recommend um consideration of putting a crosswalk. And ramps at Allison Street, so which before the southerly end of the property boundary. To allow safe um crossing there. There's no crosswalk between Prospect. I'm sorry, Bridge Road, all the way down to the bike path. So this, by putting a crosswalk there at Allison. It would allow safe crossing for kids to get to Jackson Street School because there's an access at the end of Allison. Um, right into the backside of Jackson Street School. There is not, but it's a dead end street. And so the idea would be just as kids do now. That they'd be walking at the edge of the street or in the street because of the low traffic volumes on that short um cul-de-sac.
DPW is okay with installing. Ramps and and crosswalks to streets with no.
So it's not ideal. Um, there have been other places where that's ha- where that's happened. Um, the one closest example that I can think of is actually. At the intersection of Jackson Street and Prospect um and Woodlawn. Um, where there's a ramp that goes up into Child's Park. It's not connected to a sidewalk. So um, you're right, it's not ideal, but creating a safe crossing and landing on the other side. Would also benefit from, you know, having a safe place for kids to get, because that's going to be the desire line anyway to go to school.
We're asking the applicant to install that crosswalk and the curb cut on the other side.
Yes. And so here's the question. Um, so they're proposing a sidewalk to the edge of their property. It may makes, I mean, the board can evaluate whether it makes sense to terminate the sidewalk there at the crosswalk and instead of continuing that. Um, cement concrete all the way to the end with nothing, you know, it would just essentially terminate at. The next property. And the city could certainly take it up at that point and connect to the bike path that they could also do that if it ends sort of not quite at the southerly. Edge of the property.
Right, because the eventually there is a sidewalk on Prospect, but it's on the east side of Prospect.
Correct.
Like a block or two later.
Several blocks. Yeah, I think.
I don't even know where to start with this, because this is like a major planning DPW. Non-communication happening, life or death issue. I mean, we're like four blocks from where the biker was killed by Child's Park. My kids cross Elm Street and there's the same situation where like a crosswalk. To a non sidewalk situation, people don't stop, people are in a rush at the same time, kids are waiting for buses. This is not really about this project. This is a great project. I mean. This is a major problem and someone's going to die. I mean, it's a major problem that needs to be addressed by the city. I don't know how that happens. I don't know how DPW works or makes decisions or doesn't make decisions. I don't know. Along Jackson Street, there's. I think five or six feet wide concrete sidewalks. And they're not big enough. Kids ride bikes and I agree, like, don't curve the sidewalks around the utility poles, because kids on bikes. It just doesn't work. You just get them, make them straight. I don't know. This is. You're recognizing that this is not a hundred percent of vehicular community by not putting parking spaces. That's right. That means people are walking and riding bikes. When I look at the site plan, does not look like a pedestrian friendly environment at all. It looks like. Parking lot with a building in the middle. So. I know you're operating under a lot of constraints. I get that. And this is an existing site and we want to have housing and this kind of housing specifically. I don't know what to do to make the city. Put more sidewalks and make things safer so we don't get. I don't want dead kids.
So, you know, as an example, for many years, the planning board has. And the zoning requires sidewalks along the frontages of any applicant's properties coming forward in front of the planning board. And there have been countless situations where the applicants have built sidewalks that just end at their property because. Eventually, either the next property is going to go or the city will then be able to invest and continue that sidewalk. I mean, that's actually what's happening. DOT, in this case, DOT finally did it up to from Damon Road up to the Walmart Plaza because. You could see there was a desire line and the city kept saying you got to each project, you know, Walmart or Big Y had to put sidewalks. And DOT didn't like it at first, and then it just sort of forced their hand. Okay, we're going to put a sidewalk here. So that's. Unfortunately, that's sort of the way sometimes it happens where. The property owner installs the sidewalk and starts that essentially starts that conversation. Okay, what's the next piece? But I think looking, you know, sort of setting aside what the city. Oh, the deficits this city has in terms of pedestrian infrastructure. This project, how can we, how can the board ensure that the project um creates as many safe pedestrian and bicycle. Um, access points and and um transitions as possible. And so. The um, this is why we're sort of recommending that instead of ending in the sidewalk. Just stopping it at the edge of the property that it actually creates a safer access point for. The users at this property and other people, certainly in the public right way. So.
That makes a lot of sense to me. But the. Like this, what was the road? Like, would. He's putting it there, like if the goal is to have some other. Either the state or the city or some other development. Continue this, continue this thing forward. Is Allison the right? Street for that? Or is it just the right? Like slow street right now?
Well, I I think it's the common way that children are going to walk to to school.
To Jackson Street. Like right now, is there back?
Right now, yeah.
Jackson Street. There's another back way of Blackberry Lane too, which is equally.
That's what I'm I'm asking.
But it's farther down, so.
If are there other ones that would make more sense if if they're going to put a a ramp? Is that right?
Yeah, I I don't think there's a sidewalk on Blackberry.
There's not.
So I, so I personally think we should do both. There's to be that crosswalk going over to Allison and the sidewalks should extend all the way up to the next property. Um, that's not Warburn Way, but just, yeah, continue the sidewalk all the way, but have that cross.
Right. Otherwise, the next development won't put a sidewalk. Our applicant should take DPW up on their offer to install the two minutes sidewalk. Along the bituminous curb, because DPW says they can do that. So that would save them a boatload of money. On Prospect Street.
You mean because of the material for cement concrete? Because we do require that as part of um all new sidewalks should be cement concrete.
It's really, it's not as, it's also not as durable and this is going to get a fair amount of use.
What uh by two minutes is not, yeah, right. I don't know.
I mean, we have, we have, I don't know how, when construction is starting, but there's a couple of years before this is actually going to be here with people moving in. We are creating a very dangerous situation, a what we call an attractive nuisance of. The many children who are going to be very happy to live here wanting to cross. Bridge.
Road, road to Hatfield.
A very diff- yes, and then get onto Hatfield. I mean, DPW has, I don't know, two years to put a sidewalk in, I think, really is what it comes down to. I don't know how possibly we make them do that, but.
That that is a huge project. I don't know if you've looked at that Hatfield Street that had that goes across the large ravine. With a huge culvert underneath there. It's a.
My gas line.
Two D. And a gas line. It's 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 not undoable, because you're right, nobody wants to see anybody get hurt. And that is going to be the way that bicyclists are going to go. They're going to try to cut across there. And zip down a bit. They're going to River Valley Market wherever. It's a tough, tough intersection.
And there's no sidewalk anywhere on Hatfield Street.
No.
Oh, another. On Hatfield now, yeah.
Yeah, and there's a curve there. Cars come around the corner and a hill and grade. Yep.
So it'll be urgent after the tragedy, I guess. Is that what we're saying? I mean, that's really what we're saying. It's not our decision anyway, so I don't know. I am harping on it. I just think it ought to be. Made clear to someone at DPW.
So let's let's, can we, can we resolve the the Prospect Street issue first and then we'll move over to Bridge, to Bridge Road?
Actually want to go to the Allison one.
Right.
Which is the one, which is the street? Uh, because I guess there's one other cut through. Which is the one that is the wider, like the the image that I saw here? Allison seemed like a very narrow street.
Well, the good thing about Allison is it's across from the property.
Crosses it.
So you can actually.
But I guess what I'm saying is that in the future, could Allison? Have a sidewalk or is it too narrow? That's that's what I'm. Like which which of the streets is the wider street? Uh, maybe they're the same. I I'm not a cabbie, so I can't.
We can only request the sidewalk to the.
I I under- I understand that, but but.
We don't know, Sam, and.
Yeah, alright.
And Allison might be. A bigger, smaller street, but also it's a, it's a, it's a dead end, it's not any traffic road, so it's safe to drive to bike.
That's Alice. Oh, it's like an end to you, and then they're going to walk through that snow.
So um.
I I I agree with what you said about the sidewalk and the cross.
Continue. So now the issue is, do we ask them as uh Chris's suggestion, just to go on a bitumenous sidewalk? Or to stay with the concrete?
That's not my suggestion. That's what DPW wrote.
The DPW said.
But maybe they're not.
They're they're providing different alternatives to say, if you build to the curb edge, you either need to replace the curbing and put granite. Or. Bituminous to bituminous. And so, or. Um, twelve inches offset, which would then push it so that it's not. A zigzagging sidewalk, but it would be a line, a straight shot sidewalk. And if you're going to do that anyway, I mean, then they're not making a recommendation about material.
Is that a parking? Is that decrease your parking? If you push it all to the.
No, no.
To all that hedge, they're going to move.
Say, if we move it into in towards the call the inside of those problems, it would actually protrude a little bit into the property. So we have one or two foot. I've already talked to David about this, an easy movie put in place for maintenance. Um, the applicant would prefer to work with DPW through through a few of these things. Um, just because the way the markets are, it's it's trying to like pinpoint everything what's going to be most effective um use of that. Um, area, like to work with DPW. It's not like the applicant is not willing to put in a sidewalk there. Um, the means and methods we'd like to work through and then the board's discretion on the the crosswalk. Um, but we'd like to work with with DPW through that point.
I'm sure you'd like to with DPW because they don't care. We don't want.
I think it's a planning board jurisdiction to determine the materials and the location.
Two minutes asphalt then for for the sidewalk.
That would be your preference. Because of the cost factor.
noted.
Right. But the durability of the concrete is much longer, the concrete sidewalk. And we really do push for that in all other developments.
Yep. Um, so I don't know if you are.
Yes.
You want me to keep going or? Um, so I think um Jake uh commented about the um curb material on Bridge Road. DPW just wanted clarification about what the curbing was. Um, and then. Clarification about the pervious pavement um called out in seven parking spaces um versus whether it's permeable pavers or. Um, pervious pavement, so that that's just a detail sheet clarification. Um, I would just say that the um Department of Public Works did issue a stormwater permit. So of course that is um wrapped into the stormwater uh permit um as well. So that's um, that's been issued. Separately.
And they were privy to the whole notion of these uh containment. Um, in-ground containment things that are purifying the water, not decreasing the volume, but.
Yes, so that's all part of the stormwater plan. Yep. Um, so they're noting about the details that um and these are issues that. Um, maybe appropriate for to work out, but the crosswalk detail onsite is um. Is. Or I'm sorry, the crosswalk details is suitable for the internal use only. They do not recommend a crosswalk across their driveway. It's a crosswalk striping across the driveway entrances because. Crosswalk striping should really only be across streets and not driveways. And the Hatfield, Hatfield and the Bridge Road. And um. Then there's just some details about the um stop and do not enter signs and and making those that so.
So how does that? That last one, like.
The crosswalks across.
Just say that. Do we have any? When there's a bus stop right here to not have striping?
Yeah, I mean. Yeah, I think that's just, it doesn't follow the um traffic control standards. Um, so um, there have been other instances where there's cross, there's striping across um driveways, but. You know, that's, they're just commenting on that as not being um. The design standard in the design standard manual.
We requested other kinds of pavement treatments that provide the same thing as striping. To allow for, because there's a sidewalk on either side of that large entrance on Bridge Road, right?
Right.
Kids will be using.
There's also an island, you know, a separate.
Right, there's an island that they have to walk up and over.
Or through, actually, it's a, yeah.
So I I want and and in many places we've asked for some kind of treatment, whether it's a crosshatched pavement or. It's not exactly a crosswalk per se, a striped crosswalk, right?
Yeah, I mean, typically, I think it's because there, so for example, entrances where there's a commercial entrance and you have much more vehicle. Heavier vehicle traffic and. And more volume. I mean, larger vehicles and higher volume. So yes, if you if you feel like it's important, you know, you can certainly approve the plans. That way I'm just telling you what DPW's comments are. And then they just wanted some updated sewer and water details. So that's. About it for the DPW comments.
Just out of curiosity, when did you get these comments?
They today.
One other question, I I know that you. When are when are you going to have an idea of what it's going to look like on the on the outside?
Just rendering.
Well, but then they said that those are.
I mean, for the exterior of the building.
Yeah.
So we're working with our architect and we're have pulled in a couple of other architectural designers to give us some ideas. We're looking at, we want to make sure that we've got something that will last. So from an operation standpoint, so. We've thought about painting the brick a different color. Question is, you know, can we find a a paint material that's not going to chip and and have us to repaint often? We're looking at different color treatments. We're looking at changing window sizes. So there's a lot of different options that are on the table. Essentially, the brick is going to stay. It's just a matter of how we we dress up sort of around the windows, whether it's pops of color. Or whether it's something a little bit less. Again, we're thinking about operations and long-term maintenance, and we want to have make sure that we've got materials that are going to be durable and will last.
So that's pretty good. Any, maybe we should suggest. If there's anyone else who would like to comment from the pub, well, we don't want to close the public hearing yet. I think there's still some discussion to be had. With our applicants. I don't think there's any other comments from the public. Think we're all part of the application team now and the ward counselor. Okay, good to see you here tonight. So. The traffic study was really exhaustive. It was great. You know, I really appreciate the way you've moved back that entrance onto Hatfield Street. Move back so that we we're not queuing up towards Bridge Road. That's going to work out real well. I think we still need to talk just a little bit about Bridge Road and the conflict with perhaps the bus stop. And. What the playboard feels we could do about moving forward with this, even with the. The inherent kind of conflict with pedestrians wanting to cross over to Hatfield Street that comes out. On the Channing South.
Who installed that a stop there? Was that? The town?
At the Valley Bike Station? And the pad for Valley Bike and now there's a pad for the bus stop?
Oh. I thought you said, I thought you meant stop, like stop. I get what you're saying now. Bus stop, not stop sign. Like, what are you talking about? So that was a combination, that was an effort by. PBTA had had funding for a bus stop and we thought it would be appropriate in this location. So we worked with the applicant to find the location. Paid for through funds that PBTA had. And then we also extend, use that opportunity, same installer to install the pad for the bike share station.
I, you know, I just, I I worry. I really worry. I'm thinking about, you know. The AM peak hour and then having a bus stopping there and people trying to get around it. Going into oncoming traffic. It's just like, it's just such a. Bad place for that to.
Can we blow up that place again? You know, the the rendering is so small.
Yes.
It's tough to see the, I'm sure it's been measured by the traffic engineers to show. Because I'm I'm interested to see where that left-hand turn comes into to get.
Cars are going to be driving into that left-hand, the new left-hand turn lane to get around the bus while it stops there. So there's no shoulder on the road. Yes, I I do want to say that this configuration has been talked through. It's contemplated one in the traffic. Report and then with DPW when it comes to this location. So. From an access standpoint, as it affects it by our property. We're stop controlled at this to write out only so that's the only movement that's being impacted by a bus if it would be parked there. So everyone else would be stop controlled as well. So conflict points. Exiting the site are as minimal as they can get. So the the bus is there from our impact. The situation now, as it exists today, is the exact same if 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 all this happens, the 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 bus stops there, it operates, it functions. With or without these improvements. The idea here is for any. If the bus, if this, like, for example, this this driveway wasn't here, the same issue would be occurring. The improvements that we were talking about, I don't think they would solve. That rare occurrence when it happens. We we've worked quite a bit with DPW on this.
I just want to add about the bus stop location. So this was a conversation that that occurred between planning department, DPW. And our traffic engineer were all involved in the discussion and the determination of the location of the bus stop. So. It was three, it was three different entities that made that determination.
Are full-size buses, not the short minivans, not short vans. Yeah, I wish we were part of that conversation. What what is this cross? Is there any way to blow this up a little bit? Can you expand that?
I'm sure I do this without breaking the computer.
Is that the top, at the top of the screen is this is the plus car?
Yeah, there it is. Okay. Is that too close?
Slide over.
Yeah, there you go. Yeah, yeah.
So where's the bus stop?
The bus stop where it says limited.
Close, yep.
So that's where the front of the bus is going to pull up to. It's a 12-foot wide drive aisle, so there might be four feet of drive aisle for a car to use. So it's going to be.
But also remember that in the real world where buses run all the time. Cars stop behind the bus and wait for the bus to pick up riders and leave. You know, mostly in the valley, does PBTA want to pull over and have a free and clear lane? Most everywhere else in the world, buses stop in line and the cars wait and the bus goes on. So it's not, I mean, that's a standard situation.
So given that that's the case, this proposed driving area, can we just make it so that cars can't go around?
No.
And then they. Yeah, so just correction, I'm saying, sorry, the the stripe is prevent that from happening.
So I get that. I'm saying, can we make raise it up so that you raise it up so a car cannot go around?
I I would defer to DPW on.
Okay.
Proposing physically, yeah, obstructions. I I don't know about that.
Said the buses have come that often. So it stops traffic for half a second. Is that is that a safer, is that in the grand scheme of like that stopping traffic for for the time that? It takes for people to to come on? Is that a better solution?
I think this happens in front of Smith College all day. I don't.
No, no, they went buses stopped in front of Plaski Parker Smith College. There's a a wide open travel lane for them. I think, well.
Yeah.
A lot more cross traffic over by the Smith and all those questions or whatever.
Where does the bus let passengers off coming the other way, coming up west on Bridge Road? Does that happen? This?
There's a unmarked stop right now farther up.
By Jasky's vegetable stand by the house where.
If you pull up the PBCA customer map, it shows you, it should have been stopped.
Wow, and then people would be.
There's no mark, there's no sign, there's there's nothing there.
It's a it's a flag stop or something, I think they call.
Is it on the other side of Hatfield or is it back?
It's backwards.
It's farther up Bridge Road.
After Hat, yes, on the other side of Hatfield.
And so.
Heading towards JFK.
Okay, so it is past Hatfield.
It's 70 minutes.
So those people would.
Yeah, and it's just one bus across the road. Yeah.
And they just jaywalk across the road.
Which is just. Our same situation, just a little farther to the left.
Yeah. But this has gone, been gone through by traffic engineers and the GPW in the planning office and they all like it is okay.
Honestly.
Yep. Well, no, because it ties into the same thing with the pedestrian movement.
Yeah.
There you have all these conflicts at that corner. So. You know, I. I don't, does anybody want to hold up this project in order to get more information about the pedestrian activity? On Bridge Road or the bus stop?
I mean, my feeling is is that it it's not going to change. It's like, I mean, it's not. You know, the unfortunate situation is it's not. Like that intersection is not good, but we but it's beyond the scope of this project. To to change it hopefully. Hopefully, once there's a vibrant, you know, small micro community within our community, you know, then we can and we. Somehow find a pot of gold. We can improve it, but. It just seems like there's just too many, too many things and the project is a worthwhile project to support. Uh, so I guess I I would, I would support saying yes with the hope that. You know, the management company can work with the city to try to improve it.
I I I I think. I won't speak for anybody else, but you know, we're in the position to approve these. Projects and it's a great project and I think we want to approve it. But we also know if some tragedy happens there three not years down the road. We're we're going to know we we. People might look to us and say, you know, why didn't you guys think about this? So even though it's, I understand it's outside the scope of this project. I really do. But what? What can we do? What what can we do to? We all recognize it all. I agree. My kid would be going right across that street. I walked right across that street when I was his age and down that road. So like, so like, I feel this tension, having children, like, we know they're going to do that. And we're approving a project that's going to add a bunch of kids in that spot that just aren't there now. And pedestrians and bicyclists. So. It feels like we have a little bit of responsibility, even though it's outside of purview of this project.
Moral dilemma.
Yeah.
Can we write a letter to DPW or something? City Council?
I mean.
What do we do?
So administration parking is a committee that evaluates traffic and pedestrian bicycle safety. And so there's also. And a whole sidewalk inventory and there are and the evaluation of their sidewalks and where their pressure points and where is a. So there is, there are steps that are and evaluations and studies that have been done. And so. Yes, there are ways that anybody, not necessarily with the private board, can. Provide feedback to the city on safety issues and.
And can we flag an update to the sidewalk study now that this project is coming online? Because maybe that wasn't considered as a pressure point when they did it.
It was like plant some cherry trees there so they're like, want to put sidewalks there or something?
We could, we could ask the DPW to come in some evening and have this general conversation about sidewalks.
Is that that's a subcommittee of city council? Sorry, George. That you were the transition.
Yep.
Thing is a not a subcommittee of city council. It has two city councillors on the committee. So it's a separate.
It's another commit. Okay, got it. Sorry, George.
So if we're really concerned about sidewalks and how what the metrics are for pushing them up on the priority list, which is a concern in the city. We could ask them to come in and and have that discussion because we often see this on our plans. Um, we're going to see it more and more often as we do infill, more and more infill in the city with very substandard sidewalks. So.
You know, I think it's.
It's also a funding issue, obviously. So that's where city councillors are important to be.
Yeah, I mean, I think Jackson and Bridge. Street schools have, I think, sort of special conditions because. The other two elementary schools are in areas where there's not walkable in the same way that some of the more central, the central schools are. And you could very viably live in this apartment building with no car. But you are living in quite a dangerous situation. Again, through no fault of this project. So, yeah, I think we should find a way to flag this. I mean, what, do you have a sense of your under construction starters?
So this is basically one of our first steps in our process. So once we have our permits, we would be applying to state funding this, which would, our application would go in in January. If we are awarded funding through the state, we would be awarded in about August of next year. We wouldn't be closing financially until March 2024, and that's when we would start construction. So it's it's a little bit of a way out. I mean, this is kind of early on for us. This is. When it comes to affordable housing development, this is early on in the process for us. It's it's slow and steady is 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 our pace. So. Yep. And I I I think I just want to make just one comment in in part of this conversation that may have gotten lost. And I understand that the use is changing. But this was an active property with 163 beds in it 12 years ago. So there was activity happening here. It's a different type. I mean, it's not children, you know, and I understand your your perspective, but I think it's important to remember that this was an active site. For a long time and over the 12 years or 11 years since it's been vacant. You know, that activity has dropped a lot. So, you know, just wanted to put that in terms of perspective of remembering that it was an active site and there was active. Activity around there. And I think we're making some great improvements in terms of the circulation, adding a sidewalk, things that were not there when it was an active site 12 years ago. So just want to make that.
I think that's that's well understood. I think we're all excited and hopefully these residents will bike and walk around the neighborhood more than the previous residents. So.
Which is our major concern.
Yeah, it yeah, for high school students going to Smith Voke or to Northampton High School, there's really. Tricky, tricky byways to also Hatfield Street. I don't think has a sidewalk at all heading back towards Locust Street and Smith Vocational.
But down Prospect, you can get hookup to the bike path or or continue on to Elm Street or. Crossover.
Get to the bike path. Yeah, yeah. But there's just, and and again, you know, Bridge Road is becoming in the past 11, 12 years, the the traffic on Bridge Road, I think, has really grown. You know, I know that the traffic report showed it pretty well how it's going to be lessened from the years past, but. Bridge Road now has just become a major route. And when we see the. The redevelopment of Main Street in a couple of years, Bridge Road is going to see even more traffic. So.
Yeah, well, Bridge Road isn't seeing anywhere near the traffic. It'll see once the Damon Road construction is done. Because there's a lot of people who just avoid Damon Road right now, myself included, Damon Road.
Right.
Once Damon Road's complete, then Bridge Road will pick up again.
Right.
I I'd say it's probably. I don't know, 60% of what it would be otherwise.
Right in the mornings, the traffic backs up to here right from the light, basically.
Well, used to, yeah. Hopefully, they're resolving that down at the intersection of Damon Road and King Street a little bit with that re-signalization, but we'll see.
Yeah, I moved, I moved to close public comment.
Oh, I still want to talk about site lighting.
Yeah. Oh, sorry. Never mind. I withdraw that. Actively withdraw.
Oh, I just, I just noticed on the photometric plan, there's quite a few zeros in the in the parking areas. Um, I know that you're staying under the maximum. You had point three six foot.
You you had point three six foot candles for the average. Our standard is looking for one foot candle average. So I'd say we're we're way below the average value. With zeros in the parking field, so I'm thinking that we might need more. Even lighting. Because there's going to be some some dark spots.
Just uh for clarifications, the maximum average is one for candles. The intent for this site is. The way they want to.
I don't know the maximum averages.
So like, so when you when you have when you when you have the average, right, if it was a one point one, we'd be in violation. The idea is to drop down the ball, the the actual lighting um averages. So what we've done is we've actually had a pretty well distributed um. Design where we're putting all the light downward over the cars, in particular in the landscaping areas. Um, with sixteen foot lights, um, mostly the light will call the generation from that. It's actually pretty contracted to just around the actual poles. Lighting's a a unique uh characteristic where the higher the poles are, actually the better spread and the lower the intensity is at grade. But it's the higher spread, so with the with these with the concentration we have, we actually this is actually appropriate design for residential use. It's not too intense. It's within industry standards. Um, in parking lots, you want to see between. It's really point five and zero and point five and two. You don't want to have high intensities in residential areas. And the obvious intention is not to have glare over the property line, so.
That's, yeah, that's great. There's no glare over the property line. Hundred percent agree with you. Um, I'm I'm just looking at, you know, all of these zeros, even like. Right across the front door, yeah, there's just zeros throughout the parking field.
And we're talking really on Prospect Ave.
Yeah.
So we we actually, yeah, we we evaluated. Shelter, so we looked at there's there's, especially on the northeast corner, there is actually a pole right by the bike shelter that we've implemented. Um, there is lighting around the building. There is lighting a light pole by the southerly um. Shed as well. If you're looking at the areas along Prospect Ave, we evaluated that with the team to install some uh LED lights in that location at sixteen foot heights. Uh, the issue is that what happens is the light from the back, even when the house side shielded, uh, they still spill off above what's allowed from the zoning code. Um, so the intended, we we looked at that. We couldn't get that to work um in those locations without basically violating the zoning code.
This analysis doesn't take into account streetlights that exist on Prospect Ave, though, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so I think there is more light. There's streetlights on Prospect and same with Bridge Road. I assume, I don't know, there's streetlights there.
I think you're seeing here is generation only from what we have control of.
So I'm I'm not looking at these plans right now, um, but the 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 driveway coming in and off of Hatfield.
And it would it would depend whether there's a streetlight on Hatfield near there, I think is probably bigger. Yeah, they're gonna make more of an impact than the sight lighting that they're providing.
Right, so the zoning the zoning code basically prevents lighting from being generated off.
No, no, we underst- yeah, we understand that, um, but that's mostly so it doesn't sign into residential homes and yards. It's not. Kind of signing into that street or driveway, yeah.
I just, the most important thing for me with sight lighting is to have a uniform. Sight lighting, whether that uniformity is at one foot candle or twenty foot candles. You could have, if you have twenty foot candles and ten foot candles in a lot, the ten foot candles is going to look dim. Right? Or if you have one foot candle and zero foot candles, the zero foot candles is going to look dim. So it's that you you want to have a uniform. Distribution of light, and I just see there's like a lot of.
Right, and and again, in the in the design, when we look through this, that's actually one of the parameters that's set forth within the code, right? There there is actually a maximum permitted foot candle we're allowed out, which is three. Yeah, I work I work in a lot of cities throughout the country. That is a very low standard, um, so from lighting standpoint, it's 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 very limited. So getting even distribution, actually, we've done a real good job, so no more, leaving one and three uh uh foot candles. Um, and just for the boards, that's the amount of light generated by one candle one foot away, so it's it's not a lot of light.
I understand that.
Yeah, so it this is actually thing is is going to be pretty uniform, so you're having averages between, we'll call it point five and three, so that the uniformity ratio is actually pretty um, called within parameters. It's it's really tough to tell from the human eye difference between one and one foot candle.
Right, but it is easy to tell the difference between one foot candle and zero.
I just don't think there's zeros because there's the streetlights that are.
There's zeros like all through here. Sorry, I was looking at the other. This is the front door to the building. And there's zeros like. You know, on the crosswalk from the ADA slash EV space to the front door. So. You know, I don't know, I I I don't know. I think our lighting standards are kind of messed up, but.
Carolyn, do we have any standard for doing these lighting analyses with streetlights, with the public streetlights, or is?
It's just sight lights.
And we don't have anyone in the city who really is a lighting engineer. Karen reviews these that are in her office at all the things and we have standards, but. You know, it's not like we have the tree warden who looks at these things. We don't have the the electric, the lighting expert.
Right, but our our zoning bylaw says the average should be one. Not the. Not the maximum average. I don't know what a maximum average is. We should be, we should be trained to be as close to one for the average as possible.
Yeah, yeah, there are dark spots. That's what he's saying.
I mean, that's it's literally.
I mean, a point one or a point two might seem like a dark spot in this lot, but a zero is definitely a dark spot.
In particular, really, it's just the Prospect Ave parking spaces we're talking about, right? Closest to the residence?
No, I'm talking about on the south side of the building, see if I can pull this up. In front of the proposed southern bike shelter.
Yeah, I'm I'm trying, yeah, I was figuring this right now. We actually have a slide.
I'm talking about, yeah.
There we go.
In the crosswalk of the.
Try to direct me. I'm gonna try to scroll right to it.
Go down. Yeah, just go down the bottom.
That might be too close.
Yeah.
Might just plug in my computer, have the touchscreen. Yeah, it's kind of tough to tell. We may need to pull up the actual plans. Wait, the area I think you're talking about.
Right south of that.
Can you read those, George?
No.
I can read, I can read off, so I I think the areas that we're talking about, which actually be where my cursor is currently, those are the areas of zero that we're talking about.
Yep, there's actually a zero right in the crosswalk, right by that catch basin.
Yeah, so it did in that main drive aisle, there would be zeros on either side of it, though they start to impick uh pick back up. Um, directly in front of the actual shelter, it's point four, so it goes point four, point one, zero. Uh, so it actually drops off pretty hard in comparison to the rest of the site, and then it picks back up again as you uh travel up um. The Hatfield Street way, uh, we can we can propose another uh singular light um in that location. You know, ultimately, there's not going to be a large change in the the overall light generation. If that's the area in particular we're talking about, I I can tell you we. Uh, no, it would be substantially located, um, see if I can. My cursor right here, if you guys see it, that would probably be the best location for an additional light pole, if that's the area of of actual concern.
Um, I'm concerned about every zero that's within your paved area personally.
People are concerned about the crosswalk. I mean, their cars are coming down. They have headlights, so does that really matter if they're more, if if the driveway is fully lit versus?
I I agree that we should definitely have some light in the crosswalk.
Yeah, so you know, that's what I'm wondering, a light under the roof of the bike shelter might um cast the light down towards the crosswalk, which might cover that.
Yeah, I would assume that you'd want the bike shell shelter lit for safety for many different reasons. I mean, that's like a place that you could have people hiding out and.
Yep.
Tinkering with bikes.
Tinkering, but which aren't stairs.
Yeah.
Yes.
So much mysterious activity. A lot of management.
But certainly, yeah, I think to pick up on just that, if there's a way to address that dark area at the crosswalk, it seems pretty crucial.
Right, and we're talking the EV um spaces going back to the building. I think the applicant do something to.
Okay, yeah, great. Great, well, thanks, Chris, for looking at the lighting plan um. In detail for us. They this, this is a drawback from not having uh. Plant seats that are blown up to a way that the planning board can look at it. We're all. Kind of looking at our computers and.
At your computer.
Yeah. I can't. It's just a prop.
Come on. Go with this, the plastic thing from Ikea.
They're the same problem, right?
Are those prescription glasses? Are those just, it's real? Those just glass.
You're the same problem. So are there other conditions that we would want to um agree on before we close the public hearing? That we're going to add to our recommendation? We have a, are are, we're clear on our sidewalk on Prospect Street. That it's going to be concrete, it's going to extend all the way to the property line of Prospect, and there's going to be a, the applicant is gonna. Install a crosswalk with two curb cuts there. So that was in the. That doesn't need to be a comment, right? Because it was already on the plans. Uh, it doesn't need to be a condition.
So you you should put a condition that there, because none of these, that that we want a crosswalk uh um to be added. Uh, and that may, when the ADA may have, sorry, that that wasn't.
And light, I would, I guess, and if lights, that there's uh, all the crosswalks at least have. Have no dark spots.
Yeah, the one that. The one at the north side of the building seems fine, so it'd just be that that southern one. Yeah, I mean, the crosswalk or lack thereof or whatever, we're, you know, tell them across the exit onto Bridge Road. It looks like currently there's a street light kind of where that is going to be. And I don't know, that'll have to be coordinated in the field, I guess, if they're going to move the street light or whatever, but. I don't know how you do that. If you have a maximum average that we're trying to hit, but then there's actually streetlights that aren't in this. You're going to get higher than the maximum average if you actually take light readings, right? Do we ever take right light?
But you're, but what I'm hearing is just that um crosswalk is the area.
Well, yeah, that's what Christmas, yeah. I was just pointing out that they will have to coordinate with the existing street light that's right where their exit is.
Um, the applicant, we're not requesting any kind of mitigase mitigation funds from the applicant for trees or traffic at this point?
Uh, they're showing replacement and exceeds their requirements uh under the form of on their treaty. And then in terms of traffic mitigation, they're showing a reduction in in trip, uh, peak hour trip generation from the previous years, so.
Um, we're just back to that sidewalk. Again, we're recommending that the sidewalk be installed on the opposite side of the telephone poles that exist on. The Prospect Road rather than curving, right? Yeah, unless if we think we've finished all our questions for the applicant. I guess. Um, there's. Sure.
So you're saying, you're saying curb, sidewalk, pole?
No, curb, the street curb. On grass, pole, sidewalk.
Okay.
Parking lot.
We may not be able to provide the type of vegetation and screening that we show in our plans with that adjustment, so.
So then you would have to do this windy thing around the the telephone poles, is that?
Or alternatively, we could potentially adjust the plan so that we're shifting seventeen spaces that are. Um, let me see if I can pull up the site plan and let's do it here.
Don't you still have a five foot strip between the um any sidewalk and the curb for the parking area? Name which you could still plant those shrubs that you're proposing?
Right now, the plants have a ten foot wide planting bed. Uh, we move the four foot by law and some of the places are now working wide, which will will be kind of.
A usable sidewalk is much higher priority. I mean, honestly, the shrubs grow into the sidewalk anyway, and it's, they're just get annoying. I mean, if people are using the sidewalk, they've been.
So we are responding to neighborhood concerns on that. There were concerns about making sure that the existing arbividy that were there that already provide a screening to the property. Um, that we're replacing that, so that was a neighborhood concern that we are responding to.
But those are shrubs planted there. You're not replanting arbividy.
Correct, correct.
Right.
You're gonna have, you're gonna the at the lowest spot, the slimmest spot, you'll still have forty-eight inches, four feet.
Yeah.
For planting.
Yeah. But it's, it's limited. Plant material, I think, that could survive in such a small planting area that would provide screening.
Because of the poles.
It was at a telephone poles. Their sidewalk would have to, they'd be in the middle of it.
Going west, you're saying go make push it west.
Yeah.
Because they hit their edge of parking.
There's just so much parking.
They're working with an existing parking lot.
Yeah.
Wha- what did you have in mind for screen at that four foot area? What did you have in mind for screening? For the neighbors on Prospect?
So why?
Okay, so it's not about height, it's just about width, really.
Right.
Yeah, see like.
We'd want the entire sideline.
Yeah.
Is close as it is here going around this pole.
Yeah, so just have it be straight like that, that part, I get, yeah.
Again, I'm not an, I'm not an arborist, um, but you think then that you won't be able to provide sufficient growth over the course of years to provide?
It would, there would be enough.
It's the best.
But not enough for a neighbor.
I don't know why it's doing this blue thing.
Well.
So if the shrubs are only going to be six feet high anyway, you'd still see the building, no matter what you plant.
Yeah, I I hate to design on the fly here, but the 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 drive aisle of that parking lot, you have an eighteen foot space, then you have like a thirty foot wide drive aisle and then an eighteen foot space. So could you? Could you get that to be like a twenty-four foot drive aisle, which will reduce the speeds in your parking lot anyway? Whole your impervious.
Um, turning radius still works, because I think it does, correct?
Yeah, I I think it will, but you can pull that impervious away from Prospect Street, and then that'll give you a planting buffer and let you do the straight sidewalk.
Yeah.
Could we do that?
We did discuss that today as a as a possibility, um.
And that'll reduce your impervious.
You know, that we're thinking about, but.
Right.
But if in order to accommodate both.
Um, keeping the neighborhood happy by making we making sure we've got a vegetative buffer and addressing the concerns from DPW. That seems like the the middle ground that we would have to 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 land at.
It's for the children.
It's always for the children. Except my teen, you can have him.
All yours.
JFK would be a totally different stuff.
So then we're going to stand with the the concrete sidewalk being on the far side of the telephone pole between the parking lot, and it's up to the applicant to. Either move their parking lot or to um come to a an agreement with the neighbors that that six foot high buffer is going to be fine and that. The shrubs will live within with that forty-eight inch fertile ground, yeah. Okie doke, um, other conditions, um. The uh, Sam, you're comfortable with the egress and access and uh, security and.
Yeah, I mean, that's, it's, it's not, I I just, I look at this thing and I s- and I see the same, all the different places that. That Salo House had, and I know that when my mother-in-law lived there, it. Drugs were a sizable problem.
Well, that, yep.
And um, and they're. They're managing it and. But that's it.
All right. Um, well, I think we're all set then.
Did you, what what was the outcome of the EV charger? You want to discuss it after you close the hearing?
No, so that should be one of the conditions, too. We proposed to the uh applicant that they have two additional.
Six.
Total of six, two currently, and then four with stubs for future.
I don't understand. I know this is like an existing paved area. This is hardly like an existing parking lot. And why are we not just using like the new parking lot standards?
But it is an existing parking lot.
Kind of, I mean, this is like.
Because it says building new twenty-five new parking spaces. So they're not building.
You only count the new spots that you're creating?
Yeah.
I see.
Yeah.
And the six gets us to that.
Yeah.
Uh, one per fifteen.
Yeah.
There be spaces. So that's six. Anyway.
But we're not, we're not telling them to do six, we're trying to do.
That's what you were just talking about.
Six.
Two, two now.
Two now.
Four later.
With the ability to do.
Stub outs, just, yeah.
Just PVC.
PVC, right?
Yeah.
Uh, and then we are asking them to make, to make it so that the, um, driveway or that the, um, the handicap space is not a, it's not one of those.
Keep it striped as is, but just don't designate it.
Yeah.
An ADA space for now. And then if they do it later, they do it.
Okay, good. Um, one last comment. We, we really appreciate that, uh, the landscaping is really nice now. It became quite an eyesore for a while. Um, one of the windows, I don't know who manages the property now. You know, people are getting in the building now. Okay, you'll attend to that. Okay, good. All right, wish. Um, so is there most in, uh, close the public hearing?
Uh, move the closer public comment.
Good. Seconded. Any discussion?
Question, did we, uh, determine what about the internal sidewalks if we wanted striping, not, not striping or something else?
I think the, the one that we discussed was across the main entrance on Bridge Road.
Yeah.
Um, that the DPW didn't want to see striped in there. So, but thanks for bringing that up again. I recommended that they do some other kind of pavement marking that we've seen that, as Carolyn said, a commercial spots. Um, but I think what I'm hearing is that there's a not, not enough traffic coming and going to rationalize that. Um, although, I don't know how many, you know, we, we can't foretell how kids are gonna be walking up to JFK. Um, for sure. A lot of kids, kids are gonna be walking down to, um, down that way to Goodwill and Damon Road. So across that parking lot, there may not be a, a lot of pedestrian traffic, so.
Okay.
We're okay with that, keeping it unmarked, unstriped as DPW recommended. And it's not only kids, I know. Okay, so the motion's been made to close the public hearing, uh. Any seconded, discussing? All right, all those in favor? Anyone oppose? Unanimous, okay. Um, so we pass this out a little bit, I think. Any? A motion to be made with our comments that conditions that Carolyn has?
Do we have to memorize the conditions or can just say?
You can say, and I think there are four conditions. EV, the, the sidewalk. Maybe there's only two conditions, EV, the sidewalk, the lights on the crosswalk, that's three.
Um, crosswalk at Allison.
And the additional crosswalk at Allison.
So you might just want to sort of a general c- condition about the, um, plan sheets being s- final plan sheets with all the detailed comments from, um, DPW to be submitted fifteen days before building permit requests.
Okay, did the applicant hear all those five? So there are five conditions.
So, uh, move to a pretty site plan review, uh, more than one per cut. Forty R review by Prospect Place in our LLC. Um, that seven thirty-seven Bridge Road, North Hampton with the five, um, conditions that we just listed.
Second.
Great, motions were made and seconded. Any discussion? All right, here are none. We'll go to a vote. All those in favor? No opposition, so it's unanimous. Um, thanks for all your hard work. We know it's just the beginning, as you stated. Uh, we really look forward to it. Um, it's gonna be a great asset for the community.
Chris.
And on my last map. I didn't mean to. I, you had me fooled. I thought you're up there computing a storm this whole time.
Your smartphone app. That's why I'm looking on here now, something about.
Okay, so. I have to see if we actually have, um, ANRs. I don't think we do, but, um, I just have the two other items, the close out of the subdivision in minutes.
Yeah, before we go to that, do you have any kind of next step in terms of sidewalks? In terms of that specific place or kind of why?
I'd like to flag it for somebody.
So one way through with transportation and parking, um.
I mean, you know, one thing that you, um, I wouldn't recommend doing it tonight because it's already getting late, but maybe it's your next meeting. Um, you know, you could vote on a memo or something to send to DPC. That raises your concerns about these new developments and, um, before putting that together, you could pretend, you know, I could bring the, I could send out the sidewalk inventory. So you guys can evaluate that, what it looks like and sort of what the process is. And then if you want to think about putting together a memo, then we can do that at your next meeting. I don't think you have. Um, I actually don't think, there's no meeting for November. Um, so it would be December.
As of Thanksgiving?
Yeah, because we didn't get any permit applications.
We had another one on our radar, which was the second curb cut for ADA accessibility. We were talking about a zoning change.
Oh, right, right. That's a zoning amendment, right.
So I think we'd also wanna draft something regarding that.
Um, yeah, I mean, I can bring you a draft for that.
Um, who's the chair of the DPC?
Um, Donna, the director of DPW. Donna, let's go.
Is it, does it make sense? I mean, cause I feel like we've had this transportation thing a couple of times since I've been on the board and it could. When we are called the planning, why, why isn't that just folded into what we're doing? I mean, I.
Which part?
The sidewalks, I mean?
The transportation or the, um,
The, that committee?
That committee.
You mean, why don't we, why are we part of that committee?
Well, yeah, I mean, why, why, why have another?
They, because they focus on a lot of nuts and bolts, um, pedestrian safety issues. So there is, um, um, there is a planning board seat at that table. Um, I'm trying to think of.
No.
Oh, that came off. It's, it's just planning, uh, planning office. And then there's the, um, right.
It's a subcommittee called the pedestrian and bicycle.
Yep.
But, uh.
So, eh, um, they really are charged with all things that are, yeah.
I was just, I mean, it's brought up a couple of times and especially when we're dealing with like more complicated infill things about, you know, trip about, you know, like, you know, like, for example, that, the, the property that they were talking about, they, they units that, uh, whatever. You know, and, and it was like, we've had these, these discussions of, you know, I just wonder maybe when we're dealing with us, maybe now that we're talking about infill, maybe when we're actually dealing with larger developments. Maybe they, they need to come join us for that for a, a short, a short time because that's, it's something that the public always has a question about.
Yeah, I mean, I think there, there really is, there's sort of, there's the planning piece and then there's the jurisdiction piece about the infrastructure. This is public infrastructure. It's under DPW's jurisdiction. But yes, there's a bigger conversation about where are we as a city investing, um, funds and, and, and for the limited resources, there has to be, you know, prioritization. So we've done multiple studies about prioritizing different areas, but we haven't really talked about, um, as a city, sort of looking at how we might support new housing development in X, Y, and Z neighborhoods or evaluating it, I think from that lens. So, um, it's definitely, I'm not sure that it makes sense to have a joint conversation for, for permitting purposes because it really is sort of, um, a separate function is sort of ensuring that our infrastructure network is being maintained, being improved. Um, so.
In terms of strategic planning though, the, the DPW focuses on cars and automobiles. They don't focus really on pedestrians and bicycle activities.
But we have.
Well, that's changed. I mean, that's changed a lot.
Resources go on whatever comes from the city or the state.
So, a few months ago, when we talked about making this a smart growth zone, I think if we thought about the smart growth forty R, I think it's called, right? In the more traditional way that you would say, I'm making a zone of smart growth and I'm getting money from the state. Presumably that money could feed back into the smart growth zone being the priority area. But we've chosen to do this in kind of like, oh, we're gonna take a project and make it a smart growth so we can get the money. I think like the way the smart growth legislation was written was with that in mind, like let's use the money from the smart growth state money to create the infrastructure and create actual smart growth zones, not like pick and choose little developments. I think, I think like a more traditional reading of how the law was written would kind of help us here. Um, I, I honestly don't know how we make DPW do anything, but I mean, isn't there also like a, a committee on the city council that prioritizes projects or it's like a joint committee that, that prioritizes projects? Does that not include DPW work?
I, I'm not sure what you're, are you talking about?
Okay, that's not.
That's not prioritizing projects necess- I mean, it's prioriting, prioritizing capital projects. Or those are the.
DPW work.
Not per se. I mean, it's overall sort of all the projects. But you know, I think there's, this is where the tension is and, and, um, the community is. Um, we don't have enough resources to address all the issues that, um, have been building over time. And so that's where it's important to, you know, continue the conversation with city councillors with other committees with transportation and parking and, um, sort of figure and, and be involved in that discussion about what the priorities are for the city, the community. Um, and, but I think it makes sense for you as a planning board to sort of think about, all right, based on some of these things that you've seen and some of the concerns raised, you know, put together your comments about that and send it formally along and, um, for, to be brought into that conversation.
Yep, that's all we can do.
And or, and you may talk to your city councillors, um, the two city councillors on the transportation and parking, you know, I think are Alex of Ward five and Jim Nash of Ward three, I think. But, and there, th- those two are trying to do some innovative things around traffic calming and things, but, um, it's difficult, yeah. You know?
Yeah, that's gonna be a difficult sidewalk on Hatfield to build. It's, it's, it's not gonna be easy.
But your other option based about this project in particular, Chris, around the, uh, the, the, the amount of runoff water, the amount of water that's going into the existing system. You know, aren't there other ways to get an applicant to have some of that retained? Or at least, and so they're reaching some of that by cleansing the order, I guess, that's going into the system, but, um, we, we would think that's in the DPW's really best objective to keep as much water as it can out of the stormwater system. Um, but they didn't have any kind of effort to do that here. The DPW doesn't really add anything from that.
Well, it depends on the, well, I, I wouldn't say that. I think it really depends on the site, you know, can the soils handle it? And also the conditions are, this is an existing condition. They're making, um, significant improvements in terms of landscaping and reducing pavement in some areas and switching over, you know, they're getting rid of that whole turnaround in the front and that's becoming green space.
Yeah.
So that's the standard.
Reduction was like, maybe a hundred square feet out of, you know.
But the value, right.
It was like, it's like, they're reducing, there's razor thin. There's essentially just no change.
And, but that's the standard by which they're reviewing the application. So, and yes, there is a, they push, DPW does push for, um, um, onsite, um, infiltration to the extent that, you know, it's feasible o- on a site. So that's, that part is always part of the equation. Um, in, in evaluating the, the applications.
I didn't say anything, George, because they had a stormwater permit. So it's like.
So it's kind of the move, but if, when we wanna be the DPW's allies in, in some of that, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just that site was developed so long ago. It's like, there's, you know, there's nothing that you would recognize. It's like the stormwater management systems that we ask for today. And understanding it's a redevelopment site, but it was not a great site to start with, you know, so stormwater wise, it's not very good. They had some comments in the stormwater report about at least adding deep some catch basins for water quality. The system that the applicant proposed only removed like fifty percent of total suspended solids and you're, you're looking for eighty percent, so. There, it was addressed in there, so there'd be a little bit of water quality improvement, but not, uh, reduction in runoff rates. It's really just gonna be what it already is. It's gonna be flat.
Okay, so let's try to follow up on that, um, uh, memo around sidewalks and, uh, boy, you know, about two years ago, we had a conversation with David Valetta from, uh, DPW around some basic things like the capacity of their, their systems here in the city, water, um, sewage, things like that, you know, in relation to all the infill that's happening now too in the city core. Um, so maybe there's a place too, where we can have another conversation with however they generate this, the sidewalk, um, priority list. Um, and push for what we think are some critical ones, but I think when it comes to that transportation and parking, people do come to them and say, this is a critical problem in my neighborhood. And can you address this with speed bumps or whatever? Perhaps as Carolyn's saying, we could use that avenue also to talk specifically around Hatfield Street and that intersection and get some tracks in there. Cause it does come down to money. That's a huge project.
Yeah, I mean.
And capacity.
Know that Hatfield is, is a priority for the city. It's just that thing that happened to come before.
Yeah.
And it's like very clearly an issue.
Yeah.
Doesn't mean it's like, there might be a hundred worse things and DPW probably knows better than, I'm sure they know better than I do.
And I like the idea of you forwarding us that list of sidewalks that they have. That would be great.
But to Melissa's point, I mean, we know what the residents there are gonna do. If I'm trying to get to like that shopping plaza, that's like the direct route. You're not gonna walk east to the light and then go around, you know, that, that's a very circuitous way to get there.
But it was like the decision on that, on the Catholic church, you know, we didn't wanna see it reduced. It's not a great thing. But we didn't wanna see that reduced or pile of rubble. We don't wanna lose this project of affordable housing because of a possibility of, of some kind of danger there. So often it's that Solomon-like decision. When you were thinking that, so kill the baby.
George, you wanna cut the building in half?
On, on Holly Street.
The, years ago, years ago.
Oh, oh, that years ago.
Well, and just the other day, the CPA money, you know, that went to them. So, but let's not open up that can of worms here. A and Rs to do, right?
And, uh, request for a closeout for the Higgins Way.
Can I just ask one clarifying general question? When you're looking back at, uh, the previous use of a site, so comparing, you know, that this is a, uh, uh, reduction in traffic impact and so forth, how long? reduction in traffic impact and so forth, how long is that look back before, you know, let's say that this auto house had closed twenty-five years ago? Would it still, and it had been sitting vacant since then, would it still compare or is there sort of an expiration date where we'd be looking brand new?
Well, I think there's no real expiration date. The idea is it's not a, it's not a green site that never had a use on it. So there was some traffic being generated at the site. And so the way the traffic mitigation is it, it's meant to address those new uses that create those incremental increases in trips. And so, yes, it's been years, but there, we don't want to treat it as though nothing ever was there.
Okay, thank you.
Can I interject for a minute, sir? What brings you to the planning board today? You have been. Thank you. Well, at this time, why don't we turn our attention to the closeout of the Higgins Way subdivision?
So this is not a public hearing. What happens when a subdivision goes through the process of submittal approval, construction, closeout is that, you know, through each of those phases, there's you know, when, when you all approve subdivision, which is the creation of a street for the purposes of creating frontage. You typically approve, the planning board is the board charged with approving those plans. And because there's a heavy infrastructure component, there's a performance guarantee put in place. And you've seen these come before you for reduction in performance guarantee to the point at which there's a little bit left in the subdivision and you don't release that until the applicant's ready to come back and say, okay, I'm done. Sign, you know, sign off that I'm done and please release me from my obligations. I'm, this is all set and good, ready to go. This subdivision happened to be one at State Hospital Higgins Way that where the developer walked and didn't complete the project. You may remember that we came back, the people were on the board at the time, two years ago to ask the board to have us exercise the performance guarantee, basically take the money from the, that was set aside for the purposes of finishing the subdivision so that the city could facilitate the completion of subdivision on behalf of the homeowners that were already there, even though there were some lots that hadn't been completed. So with that plus so the city took, did that, oversaw the, you know, hired the engineer to come back and identify what had to be completed. The city then put out to bid the contract to complete those items. And so now coming before you, we basically ran down the account to six thousand eight hundred dollars. And so we're here to, I'm here to ask you to officially close out the planning board permit of that so that it closes the chapter for the homeowners association. They can move on and, and they also need a closeout for the conservation commission and also their stormwater permit. So there are some elements that weren't, that are still actually in and the homeowners who's here today might want, want to speak to that, but as part of this, one of the things that we did was done last summer now, I think, was to plant trees along the, on the street in the tree belt. Some of those trees failed, so the, the landscaper was gonna come back and replant because it was under warranty. But there are things that, there are a couple of things that didn't, weren't built exactly as designed, but the engineer has essentially signed off to say, you know, the system, this is a stormwater system is functioning. It's not exactly the way it was designed to function. There were things that were built that were a little bit different than what was approved. There were the roof, the footprints of the homes are bigger, the driveways are bigger. So there are things that changed. But at any rate, we feel like we've brought it as far as we can. So I, normally it's the developer that comes before you and asks for release. But because of what happened, I'm presenting it to you because we closed out this.
Funds go, where's the sixty?
We told the owners association that we would give it to them. And then they can do, you know, use it to, there's some, still some drainage runoff issues that popped up during the course of this. So they have a, they could use it to do that. They could do, use it for whatever other subdivision improvements they want to make. But it would go to the HOA, not an individual. No, it's a private way. It was designed and permitted under the private way standards.
Sir, would you like to comment on the situation at all?
I think you have to, you have to be in the mic here, sorry.
Even though it's not a public hearing, it's kind of, people are still out there on Zoom.
Yes, we do. One is President of our HOA, who's Tom. My name is Eric Moven. I'm a member of the board of the HO, Higgins Way HOA. It's been a long and strange trip, but I want to really extend our thanks to Carolyn and to Wayne before her for helping us out of a very, very difficult situation. And it's, it's a nice project. It ended up being a wonderful community. And the adversity brought the neighbors together. A few loose ends, but we got a good organization in place to take care of them. And again, I really thank the planning office for all the help that they gave us over the past three years.
Thank you. I moved the, released the funds.
Are we, are, do we need any like evidence or we just, we just assume it's all good?
I think I sent you the links to the engineer's report. So no, you should not rely on me. But I'm relying on the engineer we hired to, and he was very clear. You know, there are things that they were beyond the scope of the work that we hired them to do that they noticed were not exactly the way they were built, but you know, it's functioning and
It's somewhat unusual in my tenure on the board to do this much work. Another one was up in Leeds, I think the Beaver Brook Development for a while. The money in escrow. So we've been pretty fortunate with developers by and large, but
I'll second then.
Yep. So the motion's been made and seconded to close out this permit for the project on Higgins Way. Any discussion?
I have a question. I'm not proposing that we do this, but what, what would that we deny it, but what, what's the alternative? If we said, no, we're not willing to close it out, then what happens? I'm just procedurally, I'm trying to understand what are.
Yeah. Well, you would only do that if you felt like there was more that could or should be done to. And so if that were the case, you'd want to identify, no, I'm not, I'm not comfortable doing this until X, Y, or Z. And because ultimately, you know, you, you're, the board is accepting the fact that the subdivision has been completed as, as this has been approved or substantially in compliance with what was approved.
You can't use the sixty-eight hundred for a fact finding mission to Hawaii or anything?
And I, and I guess because the HOA is here to support that they're ready to have it closed out too, you know, rather
Is there like a waiver of of litigation? Or, I mean, I mean, is there like, this is all, everyone's agreeing that like everyone's happy and this is the end of it? I mean, and the title can move on and everything?
Um, yes, I mean, there's a, I don't know exactly what you're referring to, to litigation. I mean, there's, you know, I, I have no idea what's going on with the developer. And so we, we're not involved in that, you know, so I wouldn't want to respond to yes or no.
There's nothing from the homeowners actively saying like, we agree that this is all good or anything like that.
Well, they've been asking to have it closed out because they want, they want, they want to close the loop. They want to finalize this.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. There was some discussion. All those in favor, closing out this permit, great. Unanimous. Thanks for bearing with us. You're welcome to stay for our approval of minutes and A and Rs.
Eric, I just, I didn't, I haven't processed their distribution of funds yet because I was waiting for this to happen. So I'll do that in the next few days. No, it's just in the minutes. Yeah.
You can get it framed. Put it up in your shed.
All right. We have three sets of minutes from September eighth, September twenty-second and October thirteenth.
That I Sent you an updated September twenty-second because Chris
Good man. I, I often look just to see who's attended and who didn't and make sure that I was there or not. Yep.
I moved to approve the minutes of the dates that you just said.
Okay.
Second.
Minutes are made and seconded to approve those three sets of minutes. Any discussion? Thanks, Chris, for looking at those religiously. All those in favor? It's unanimous. We're on a unanimous roll tonight. And now we have a couple of our infamous, our famous A and Rs.
Actually, I I don't there was one A and R that came in, but it was after I posted the agenda. So I don't think that technically we should review. Oh, although I will say you're not gonna meet again till December. So there is a twenty-one day period that you have to review it. So I'm just gonna put it up on the screen.
So we just become approved without us.
Yeah.
We wouldn't want that, right?
Not at all, never.
Disappointment of the
So here we go. It's just a land swap. It's not even creating a new lot. So let's just see this.
Love those friendly neighborly land swaps.
So can you see this? I'm gonna zoom in. Okay. So this is on Monroe and it's just the back part of a lot, these two lots. And it was just this, this area here, existing lot line.
Row is off of Elm Street by the Catholic. Where's Monroe?
Off of South.
Off of South Street.
Yeah. So so it's really to give that little wedge in the back to thirty-eight B one oh six from one oh five.
And for, well, sorry, but is four feet for the setback from the garage, okay?
Yes, detached accessory structures can be four feet from the lot line.
Now that it matters.
Good question.
Not what we're endorsing.
Well, we wouldn't want to create a
It was non-conforming. They'd have to get a variance to do this, but
Yeah.
That said, the, said location.
Second.
Of Monroe Street. Okay, what motions had made and seconded, prove the A and R. Any discussion? All in favor?
That's all I have.
Second.
All right, most ready made, close the meeting at ten. Nine forty-seven. All those in favor? All right, and no meetings since that in November.